Well, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, November 19, 2024, 7:03 PM. This is the City Council meeting for the City of Edina on this particular date. And Director Benarot has talked a little bit about the fact we're running these meetings in a hybrid sort of fashion. We've got folks in the audience live. That's always a terrific thing to have people in the chambers. And then we've got people listening online. Two opportunities tonight to speak to the council about matters that are of concern to them and not scheduled or not on the agenda this evening and not scheduled for a future public hearing. With those two provisos, we'll be able to listen to people both in the audience and that come in through the mechanisms that we got set up for their participation on both public comment and with respect to the one public hearing matter that we have this evening. So having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the role for the council.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Rissler.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda that's been published per the requirements of our city ordinances and published for both the benefit of the city council members as well as the public, general public. And is there a motion to, does anyone in the council or staff wish to modify the meeting agenda any form or fashion? All right, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew, seconds. The approval of the meeting agenda is published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The meeting agenda is adopted. Next, we are at that community comment point that I'm going to have the folks in the back room put the numbers up on the screen so people that are listening in, if they want to call in for a community comment, they can do so. But first, let's turn to folks in the audience and ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. If you want to visit with the council, feel free to come forward with that, those criteria in mind. And I think you're going to need a handheld microphone if you want to stand there at the middle podium. And we'll have you give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. And then you'll get a yellow warning light when you've got 30 seconds left. Thanks for joining us this evening.
My name is Jim Grouse, and I'm a resident and taxpayer at 5513 Park Place. I am also a 30-year tenant and taxpayer at 5200 Wilson Road. This is a picture of the south face of Maison Green. There is a similar banner on the west face of Maison Green. And we had a council meeting here a while back, and the management of Maison Green was told you cannot put up large signage like this on the building. So my question is, why is this still here? They were told they can't do it. And now, this isn't the only now leasing signage that there is in the building. There's additional on the west side. And if this is okay, perhaps I should inform the property manager of 5200 Wilson Road, they can do the same. And that brings me to another question. It's pretty obvious that this building is doing poorly because I walk by it or drive by it every day, and there's very few lights on at night. And we also heard at a planning commission meeting that the vacancy at the Bauer is, you know, 30%. So my question to each member of the council is, why are you approving hundreds and hundreds of additional apartments to be built in this city when clearly there's not a market for it? And my concern also is that this property, Maison Green, is, and the increment is partially pledged on a bond issue. These are general obligation bonds. So if this does not perform, and doesn't get leased up, and it does not perform, the increment will not be there. Therefore, it's going to have to be made up by assessing the city taxpayers to pay off these general obligation bonds. As you move forward, approving additional projects, please keep that in mind because our taxes are already out of control. The levy is out of control in this city. And apparently, you aren't paying attention to the basics. And this is one of the basics and fundamentals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grouse. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing? Okay. Let's turn to the virtual world and see if we have anybody waiting to speak to the council.
I don't have anyone online yet, sir.
Okay. All right. Our practice is to address issues that were raised in the prior council meeting through the city manager, in this case, the assistant city manager. So we will ask now Ari Lenz to see if she has any responses to community comments that were made at the prior city council meeting.
I do not.
Okay, none made. Apparently, that required response. Is that?
Manager Neil responded to the one on the spot that was a question.
Very good. All right. And then we'll take Mr. Grouse's comments under advisement. I can tell you, Mr. Grouse, that every building I was in during election season was at least 95% to 96% leased up, whether there's lights on in the apartments or not. Most of these buildings and apartments in Edina, they were very satisfied with the level of occupancy. For the Maison Green, I'm sure it'll take them a little bit of time to get things leased up. But the Bauer, you referenced, I don't know who that made that reference at the planning commission, but the Bauer told me they were 96% or 97% leased up. And I don't know if other people had that same experience during election season, but these apartments are primarily full of residents, particularly in the Southdale District, full of tenants, full of people calling an apartment home. So let's move on then to the next portion of the agenda, and that is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council who wants to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce, second to the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All the items on the consent agenda are adopted. Now, we're on to special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We have one matter here this evening, and Bill Nuenendorf, our Economic Development Manager, is going to introduce this matter. And we've got, I think we've got Rebecca Sorenson. I see, here she comes. Rebecca Sorenson back here, who is the Executive Director of the 50th and France Business Association, is going to be here to accept the proclamation. But Manager Nuenendorf, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. This item is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. It's that time of the year with the holiday gift-giving season that we really try to celebrate our local small businesses that we have here in Edina. So the greatest part of the economy is really those small businesses and all the additive measures that they make, both to employing people, to being part of the community, and providing services and goods to the community. So there's a proclamation in your packet this evening, and Rebecca Sorenson with the 50th and France Business Association is here with me this evening and is happy to accept that proclamation on your behalf and give a little bit of information about some events that they have coming up.
All right, good. I think what I'll do is read the proclamation first, and then we'll turn it over to you for some comments about things that are upcoming at 50th and France. The proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which has been designated as November 30, 2024, reads as follows. Whereas there are more than 2,400 businesses located in the City of Edina, and according to the United States Census, over 96% of all firms with paid employees in Hennepin County have fewer than 100 employees and are classified as small business. And whereas small businesses are located in each of Edina's commercial districts, including 44th and France, 50th and France, 70th and Cahill, Cahill Business Industrial Park, Grandview, Lincoln Drive, Southdale and Greater Southdale, Pentagon Park, Washington Avenue and Wooddale Valley View. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, small businesses account for 2/3 of the nation's employment growth. And whereas 79% of consumers surveyed in the 2021 Consumer Insights survey understand the importance of supporting small businesses located in the community. And whereas for many local residents, the Thanksgiving holiday kicks off a season of gathering, dining, shopping, and experiencing arts and culture, and consumers know that supporting small, independently owned businesses has a positive social, economic, environmental impact. And whereas the SBA, as well as other public and private organizations across the country, have recognized and promoted Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas the City of Edina celebrates our local small businesses and recognizes the vital contributions these businesses make to the local economy and to the overall health and vibrancy of the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Edina City Council does hereby proclaim November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Edina, and urges the residents and guests of our community to support small businesses and merchants located in each of Edina's commercial districts on this day and throughout the year. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation as read?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Agnew, seconds. The adoption of proclamation, Small Business Saturday designated November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday. Any further discussion? All those in the council in favor of adoption of the proclamation as read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The proclamation is adopted. I'm going to hand this to...
Thank you.
I'm going to bring this down to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I'm going to have you make your comments.
Thank you so much, Rebecca Sorenson, again, with 50th and France. And this is quite an honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the 125 businesses at 50th and France. Thank you so much, city council members, for Mayor and Economic Development Director, Bill Nuenendorf, for this distinction. Today, the holiday tree was actually delivered to the district just as we're seeing the last orange cones leave after six long months of construction. It's been a good day at 50th and France, and this makes it even greater. So thank you so much. I just want to share one anecdote about these businesses that I think will make all of you realize how special it is to have a small downtown. We went through a lot together with the construction, and there were businesses very concerned about their survival at one point. And it was one of our business owners at a restaurant, D'Amico, actually, who stood up and said, "We will help each other get through this. We are a family." And I want to just mention that as the number one reason I think we should all shop local and support our small businesses. We are thrilled that we're going to have the mayor and Hennepin County Commissioner Heather Edelson with us as we light the district on November 30, starting at 5 o'clock. I hope everyone will join us. All day, there will be great shopping and dining, free carriage rides. When you buy anything in the district, you get to take a carriage ride. You can have free gift wrap at our new gift wrap station. We're bringing in all sorts of live music, including our former city council member, Mary Brindle, and her brass Scots. They'll be performing, as well as our Edina High School singers and The Voice finalist, Kat Perkins. We're so excited for the many things we'll be doing for the holiday season as we return customers to the district post-construction. Everything from the Edina Theater is showing Elf with a side of Edina grilled pancakes. We're doing ladies' nights. We're doing procrastinators' nights. We're also bringing in a candy cane unicorn if Sharon accepts our application for a permit. Hopefully, she will. And we think you're going to really love being back at 50th and France. We're making it extra festive, and again, we're just so thrilled that we've survived. And we have so many small businesses with stories to tell from this summer and from the enduring construction that will soon be over. We hear tomorrow. So that's an honor. Thank you again, and I hope to see everybody at 50th and France. Thank you.
recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And now we go to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and we have just one public hearing matter in front of us this evening. And Addison Lewis, our Community Development Coordinator, is going to introduce the topic. And then we're going to hear from the applicant, which is Alpha Investment Group. They'll be available for questions from council members. Then we're going to have a public hearing on it, and I think there'll be a motion to close the public hearing then at noon on November 24 and continue the action to the December 3, 2024, city council meeting. But we will take live testimony tonight, both in person and virtually, and then continue it for written comment for another week or so. So I'm going to turn, excuse me, I'm going to turn now to Addison Lewis, our Community Development Coordinator, to introduce the topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, the request tonight is for site plan review and variance at 3400 Edinburgh Way. The property is the existing 133-unit Marriott Residence Inn located in southeast Edina just north of 494. Alpha Investment Group is the applicant, and they are proposing to convert the existing hotel to a 136-unit apartment building that would consist of seven studios, 122 one-bedroom units, and seven two-bedroom units. The applicant has indicated that all the rents would be affordable to those at 80% area median income, and 68% of the units would be affordable at 60% area median income. The developer has indicated that they are not requesting any financial assistance for this project. The project or the property is guided office residential in our comprehensive plan at up to 75 dwelling units per acre. It is zoned MDD 5 mixed development district, which allows for apartment buildings as a permitted use in that zoning district. And then we just have some photos of the site as it is today. So this is the existing building. It's seven stories high. It's a brick building. No changes are being proposed to the exterior or really any site work other than some landscaping improvements that I'll touch on here in a minute. So as I mentioned, to accommodate the request, the site plan review approval is required. That's due to the change in use requiring some additional parking, more than the use that is there today. There's also a variance being requested for not having any enclosed parking. There's a requirement in the code that for multifamily, there'd be one enclosed parking stall per unit. There is none there today, so the applicant is requesting a variance to have zero stalls enclosed. But the site does contain the minimum number of required parking stalls for the apartment, just that none of those would be enclosed. So this is our pyramid of discretion that we look at when we're making decisions. So with the site plan review, we're really operating here with very little discretion. It's just a check to make sure that the project complies with the code, and it's an opportunity for you to ask questions of staff and the developer. And then with the variance, we have some discretion, but it's limited to that variance criteria that I'll touch on here in just a sec. So here's a look at their existing conditions survey. So we have the existing building up here on the north end of the site, and then the remainder is really just this 185-stall surface parking lot. So by code, the use, the conversion to the apartments would require 170 stalls, so they exceed that. There is this 86-stall easement that Edinburgh Park holds for users of the park, over 86 of the stalls. The Parks Department has indicated that they would like to keep that, and the developer is aware of that and is not opposed to it remaining. We don't anticipate that there would be any issues with parking. The applicant has stated they think that they only need around 100 stalls, and that was supported by the parking study that was done that indicated a need for about 97 stalls to accommodate the proposal. So this is that variance criteria I mentioned. Director Teague has kind of outlined the analysis in your report. I won't repeat all of it here, but just to kind of summarize, staff finds that the variance is justified primarily due to the fact that they're proposing a reuse of an already developed site. So if they were starting from scratch, there really wouldn't be any practical difficulty for the parking. They would typically incorporate that underground or as part of the building. But in this case, the only way to really comply with that, they would need to build a standalone garage in the front yard. From an aesthetic standpoint, we don't think that that would be ideal. There's also the possibility that if they were to do that, that could potentially trigger a need for a variance from the building coverage. So potentially, either way, we're looking at a variance. And it would certainly require removal of a lot of the existing trees that are within the landscape islands of that parking lot. We don't think that the request would alter the existing character of the area, given that it is an existing condition, and there are a number of other sites that Director Teague mentioned in the report, other multifamily buildings throughout Edina that just have surface parking lot or that do not comply with this standard. Another area where I think you have some discretion here, the applicant is proposing to kind of beef up the landscaping to better screen that parking lot. I think it's noted in the report that they far exceed the number of trees that are required here, but as one way to kind of minimize the visual impact of that parking lot, they are proposing to do some additional landscaping. It looks like they're proposing kind of a combination of some arborvitae, spruce trees, and some overstory trees here. I don't think we have a rendering of exactly what that would look like, like a landscape architect's rendering, but the applicant could answer any questions you have about the landscaping. And then here's our compliance table. So we do a check to make sure the proposed building complies with code. Really, nothing is changing, so it either complies with code or their existing conditions. The one thing that is triggered just is that requirement for the enclosed stalls here. So you see that that is what's triggering the need for the variance. So the Planning Commission reviewed this at their October 30 meeting and voted 9 to 0 to recommend approval of the requested site plan and variance. They did recommend that the council and staff talk to the city attorney about potentially requiring a contribution to the PACS fund as a condition of approval. And in talking with our city attorney, it doesn't sound like, well, there needs to be a direct nexus between any conditions put on a variance and the variance that's being requested. So in talking to our city attorney, it was not recommended that we do that. So tonight, we're looking for a motion to close the public hearing at noon on November 24 and continue action to the December 3 city council meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Questions for Mr. Lewis. Yes. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the conditions in the resolution is references a memo from the Parks, Parks and Recreation, and I just want to make it clear to the public that this involves the use of Edinburgh Park, that currently the hotel has the use of Edinburgh Park, and that the apartments will continue to have that use because there's no playground or anything here, but it does have access to Edinburgh Park. Is that correct?
They would have access to the pool, the track, any fitness facilities, and the locker rooms, but not access to the play park.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew, go ahead.
So to make sure I understand, hotels don't have the requirement for enclosed parking. So the site today is code compliant, and it's really the distinction between our city requirements between apartments and hotels. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rissler.
I have to believe that we have other apartment complexes in Edina that do not have the required amount of enclosed parking. Is that true?
That is true. Yep. Director Teague has identified several in the report. Yorktown Continental, Sunrise Senior, Summit Point Senior, The Heritage, Walker Elder Suites, and most recently, 66 West.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Standby. I think we may have some other questions that evolve here, but let's bring the applicant up. Did you indicate, Mr. Lewis, how much time the applicant would have for their presentation?
No. Did you, 10 minutes is typical?
All right. 10 minutes, 15 minutes or so?
Ten minutes, yeah.
Sure.
Depending on your questions, Michael.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you need renderings of the landscaping, I've got them, some digital set.
Yeah, that would be good. That's one thing I've been curious about.
Okay, great.
Whether you want to use the screen and show...
We'll put those out, kind of as I kind of just go through.
Okay.
So thank you, Edina City Council members, for allowing me to present this project to you. It's our pleasure with my partner, Abe Roberts, and I. Alpha Investment Group is presenting this conversion of the Marriott Residence Inn Hotel at 3400 Edinburgh Way to convert it to 136-unit apartments. So we have three unit pickup.
Yeah, please, sorry to interrupt, but would you please give us your name and address for the record?
Patrick Jutton, and 3400 Edinburgh Way, Edina. Does that work?
All right. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Grouse.
All right. Thank you. So our proposed change of uses, as we see, it's kind of means several key goals that the city has, and one of those is to give attainable rental housing in the city in a quick and low-cost fashion. We don't need to ask the city for any funds on this project, like was discussed earlier in the open comment section. There's no government money needed at the city, state, or federal level to get this project completed. Because we're not a quote-unquote formerly affordable project, we don't need to have formal screening and compliance criteria, which add a lot of cost to a project as we look at operating the building. We can deliver units quite quickly. We're planning by spring 2025 to have this building moving ready as we work our way through the floors and make them available for moving. And the building enjoys being very ideally located to a lot of density for good workforce amenities. There's shopping, there's groceries, there's a great employment base, and excellent public transportation in the area as well. So we also like that this project is sustainable. We can use it pretty much currently as is. We can hit a lot of the city climate agenda goals by keeping this project without doing a lot of changes to it, and I'll get into that. And lastly, we feel like the project, the way we presented it, is in context with what's already there, with the Brookdale Senior Living and the Edinburgh Office Project and the park. They all kind of have a harmonious, unified look from when they were developed in the mid-'80s into the early '90s. So we've tried to keep that intact. So a little bit about myself, I was born at various Southdale many years ago, so I at one point wasn't a Edina resident. And then my travels took me a little bit further away, but I've got about 28 years in real estate development. I started in Southern California, and during that time till currently, I've done personally, been involved with about $200 million in real estate development in multifamily new construction and redevelopment, in single-family tract and spec homes, as well as commercial office value add. And also, we did a period of a lot of loan workouts during the crash of 2008 to 2012. I'm used to very complex entitlement markets in Southern California, heavily rent-controlled markets, and so I kind of enjoy the opportunity to work in the Minnesota environment and the City of Edina for a project like this. I also carry a general contractor's license, another entity, and then have had a real estate brokerage license in both residential and, but not commercial residential, for approximately 20-plus years for each of those activities. So in the scope of this project, the projects I get involved with, I'm very involved with for construction and for the lease-up and follow-on management. I find that the projects that I've done well over the years are ones that we've kept internally managed and internally stabilized. So there were a few questions that came up in the planning and on the community boards that I'd like to address about that. But to hit our first big point, I like this project a lot and present it to you because we're a market-rate project, but we're affordable to a broad range of potential Edina residents, and I think that's really unique. We're coming at you with a project that I would consider as a Class B building. What makes a Class B well? Class A is the shiny new fancy buildings that you get a commanding, the top rents for. And this building was built in 1990, was redone in 2012 when the Marriott required a refresh on the brand. The ownership that currently has it has had it since 2005, which prior to that was Hawthorne Suites, if you have something to remember. And so we look at this building and say, okay, it's a little bit older, we've got smaller unit sizes, we don't have covered parking. And all that actually lends itself to making it quite unique in the competitive field of when I look at a Bauer or I look at some of the other projects coming up in Pentagon Park and neighboring projects. We can deliver units that are quite affordable with a good amenity base, but in a building that's not going to have all the bells and whistles. And I think that in Edina, when we're looking at where the housing hole is, this is really where it is. Certainly, at the lower affordable projects, where you've got to be fully entitled and funded by affordable programs, but especially in these non-covenanted buildings where you've got ability to deliver 136 units in a quick timeframe, it really presents a unique opportunity. And that kind of gets... opportunity. And that kind of gets me to the next point, that in this situation, we don't have to ask the city for funds because of the way the building is currently laid out and where it sits. I looked at the city affordable website and talked to Stephanie Hawkins a few times, and we're looking at a need in the city of 573 units of what our rental targets are at. So what does that mean? We're in the, if you define it, 50% to 80% AMI target with our rents. So our one-bedrooms are going to be about $1,250 a month. They average 480 square feet. Our two-bedrooms will go up to 1,700, and our studios will be about 1,100. So that's a, in comparison to the new luxury units that are coming on or have come on, the one-bedrooms usually start around $1,500 to $1,600, and those are their teaser units, and then they quickly climb to about $2,000 a month for your one-bedrooms in the newer buildings. So we are around $300 to $400 less a month, and that's a big deal, because that means when you look at what you need to budget to rent in your income, it's, you know, $1,000 to $1,500 less a month you need in your income to actually afford a unit like that, not have it put you in a financial pressure There's been some concern about the living spaces being small. We actually like the smaller living spaces. We feel that this plays well, that we can be more affordable because we're smaller, but also because we've got so many amenities nearby with the restaurants and the retail and the entertainment, that you're not going to be just holed up in your unit. We also have the park, which has 70 degrees 365 days a year and a full acre of coverage. So if you want to stroll out your apartment and go get a little walk in the park, you're able to do it. We're enjoying really good bus service at the stop. We're right at the number six and the 537. Their stops are right to the west of the property, on our property curb. We're a block away from the 538 and the 540. All those get you north, south, east, west, downtown Minneapolis. They get you over the U of M. They'll get you to Southdale, the transit station. So they get you over to the Mall of America, just with those four bus lines. So we've got good accessibility to areas within the city where there's other employment bases. We are planning to add bicycle parking to encourage more bicycle transportation in our particular property. And then in the smaller living spaces, we also can offer outdoor patios. That's already there with barbecues, and we'll make that a little bit larger. We have the ability to take the existing office space and change that into co-working space. So if you want to work out of your home remotely, you don't have to do it in your unit. You come down into our co-working space and spread out a little bit more. And then we also have the Great Centennial Park nearby. So there's a lot going on for this location that, to me, overcomes just a small unit size. And so we like our sustainability of this project in a lot of ways. First of all, it's adaptive reuse, so we're keeping the building. We're not putting any tear down. We're able to keep it in the way it mostly sits. The units have kitchens, they have bathrooms. You've pretty much got a normal-sized and laid-out apartment unit. I'm sure a few changes that need to be, that we've decided need to be made. Well, for example, bigger stoves. They got little two-burner cooktops. We like to put a real range in there and make it more of a home feel, not a short-term stay feel. Structurally, the building's in great shape. The way the low-bearing walls work out, whatnot, we can modify door openings easily to accommodate some of the ADA issues that the city building department's brought up to us. And the, another benefit of the change apartments use is we actually lower the vehicle counts for traffic from the hotel use, and that was done by an independent traffic study that's a city commission. So there's going to be less road use with this use as well. In our ramp, our covered parking, which we'll call a ramp, that variance has a huge impact if you build it, and so there's a large sustainability pickup by not doing it. That meets the city climate agenda goals. I kind of just looked at the concrete that you'd have to put in this ramp, and we're looking at 136 stalls. General metrics for a stall are around 320 to 350 feet per car. That gets you about 45,000 feet, 42,000 to 45,000 square feet of concrete-covered area. That translates into roughly, how many cubic yards? That's 1,300 cubic, excuse me, let me look at my sheet here real quick. 1,300, or, excuse me, 1,200 cubic yards of concrete would go into a garage that size, roughly. If you look at the carbon, CO2, carbon dioxide print that we put out, that's the equivalent of 15, excuse me, 1.5 million pounds of carbon just from the concrete. That's not the rebar, that's not the lighting, that's not any of the extra stuff. That's just the concrete side of things. And concrete overall in construction contributes about 8% of the overall carbon footprint a year on the globe. So concrete's actually quite intensive to do, because you've got to heat it up to make it cure, and that's kind of one of the biggest carbon-creating parts of it. So what does that mean? 1.5 million pounds of carbon? That's the equivalent of 32,000 trees a year just existing. They take up 48 pounds of carbon, one tree. That's the equivalent of 150 cars operating for a year. So if we look at, if we look at that, just by using what we've got with the parking, which meets our need, we can save a lot of, a lot of carbon gas that we put in the environment just by building that deck. I think also too, the other thing about sustainability, we've got the landscaping, screening, which I want to get that up there, just so everyone can see that. Just give Okay, so the landscape screening, again, adds a bit of sustainability, because we're adding some green, green to the property. This top picture is a current landscaping from 78th, looking north. Shift that up like that. This is our CAD rendering of with the added arborvidie, or a story trees, and some lower shrubs. So what we looked at doing and talking with the city and Kerry Teague and their department is creating a visual screen, so you're not seeing those parking lot pocket views as you drive by the site that currently exists. This is kind of from the southwest corner, say more as you get towards Chalabella, as-is. And then this would be with our screen added in. So we're proposing adding five-to-eight-foot trees, so you already get a good coverage out of the gate, instead of, you know, just little tiny saplings. Here's that lash. So this is more kind of moving towards the west side of the property, looking east. You can see the Brookdale Senior Living Hotel. Again, you've got the gap here. Bring that up. So we've got more of these arborvidies going in, the lower-story shrubs. So along the Edinburgh 78th corridor, we're seeing approximately 45 trees go in between the five and eight-foot size. Some will grow into be more overstory trees in that 40-foot size as time progresses, and then about another 100-plus shrubs. We go in there as well, based on our plan, proposed plan. If you want to see those again, just let me know. I can bring those back up. To continue on, we like the project aesthetics as they are. We feel like we've kind of got a sweet spot with the way the building is, in terms of how it integrates with the neighboring properties. The changes the public would see, obviously, then the signage is coming down. Marriott will dictate that all signage comes off the property, since it's no longer Marriott property. So you'd see a new building name, which has yet to be determined, and then some signage on the building, likely one south-facing and one west-facing. Those are currently signed windows on the building. And then there's some monument signs as you come in off 78th and Edinburgh. If you kind of contrast putting a ramp on the site, a ramp will likely add a couple anywhere from 10 to 25 feet, depending on how high you had to build it, or how you configured it to accommodate 136 stalls. But that would obviously be in the front yard, so a ramp would block your visual aesthetic of the building. Again, we feel that's not really conducive to what the whole purpose is of the covered parking to detract from the building. Questions have been added, asked about us, about who we feel the target residents would be for this building. And we kind of looked at this economically, but also from a practical standpoint. Within the city, there is 41,000 commuters per day that come in for employment into the city of Edina. That's 92% of the workers commute to Edina every day. And when I was talking to Stephanie Hawkins earlier today, I said, what do you infer from that? And she said, well, it's not affordable. I said, yeah, that's kind of the same conclusion I make, when you've got that many people commuting, and it's tough to, tough to work and live in the same place. So we really feel that with our project, we're going to have a project that is uniquely affordable to a lot of the people who we feel are coming into that Southdale corridor to work. And I wanted to bring up, that's only a piece of paper here. Here we go. Here we go. I'll put this one up. Okay, so this came from the city of Edina, under the Affordable Housing Department. So in this slide here, you'll see, I don't know if you can read that, but it's just got the general wages, annual wages for these different positions in the employment categories. And what I did with this highlight here is pointing out that once you get to that 30, above 36,000, so about $37,400 at $18 an hour, where you start to be able to afford this unit and be able to afford it without stressing out any other areas of your life. So you look at the type of people that can start affording that unit, and again, we're not having to qualify. I mean, this can lock in and say, you know, we want to rent the unit, but this works for our budget. Janitors and cleaners, preschool teachers, teacher, substitute teachers, skid guards, cooks, landscapers, nursing assistants. So we start to look at the healthcare workers up in Fairview Southdale. We start to look at a lot of the retail employers, entertainment employers that are in the Southdale corridor. And this is really a nice opportunity for them, as well as city employees who are our first-year firefighters, first-year police. I mean, just where you have, you need something to start building up your life, and you can walk right into it and not have to qualify or be requalified on a year-by-year basis. It's really kind of nice to have something like this, in my opinion. So target residents fall into those categories that we think are going to be in their workforce entrance, young teachers, young public service people, city employees, city staff. We see retail staffers in 18-to-20-hour full-time shift being able to afford the units. We also see there's probably going to be a component of the 55-plus community that's not ready for Brookdale Senior Living, much more independent, and they like that location, like the amenity of the indoor park. And frankly, the people that don't want the Class A amenities, they don't need all the bells and whistles, but will again like the location, like some of the basic offerings we have that the building can offer. And then the other question I've forgotten that I wanted to address is, well, once they got it leased up, what's it going to happen to the neighborhood? We want to know what the building long-term is. We're long-term owners. We plan to own our targets at least 10 years. And so we would self-manage it. And I said earlier on, I find that we do a lot, but when we self-manage them, we give it to third parties. We get better retention rates. We get less nuisance issues. It's kind of just a long-term, better operating plan for when I've been involved in real estate than putting it out to third parties. We would staff it with a full-time manager, have an onsite caretaker, and then have probably a three-quarter time general maintenance staff person. And again, that would be by a company that I'm involved with, that I own, so there would be no absentee ownership, if that were a concern. So that is the project. So we're very excited to propose it to you, and happy to open up to any questions you might have of me at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Jutton. Let me ask councilmembers, but just a clarification, so the, did you hand out this sheet, or did this come from our staff about the area median income?
It's from another speaker.
Came from another speaker?
It's from a resident's speaker, yes.
Oh, okay. So the sheet is showing area median income at 124.9, which sounds about right to us. And someone earning 80% of AMI, as I understood from your testimony, and maybe Mr. Lewis, that the people that you would be renting to, your target market is the people that are at 50% to 80% of area median income, which puts them at roughly, by my calculation, 62.5 to $100,000 a year, whether it's a single person or combined income.
I think those numbers are families of four.
What?
That sounds high. I think those numbers on that sheet might be a family of four. If you, is that clear?
Yeah, that's correct. You're right. It's for a family of four.
So, and what I talked about with you is like, I'm looking at someone who's making, an individual, not a collective family of four. Like, if you look at a studio, for example, we're not going to get four people in there, from a practical standpoint. But that's down at the $37,000, $38,000 level, that you can afford that, $1,250 a month. So, yeah, the 120,000 number is well in excess of the 80%. But that, again, that talks to what a family of four AMI would be. So.
You're correct.
That would probably work for a two-bedroom, but I don't think I can get four in a one-bedroom, from a practical standpoint. So our numbers, I think, we offer, to talk that terminology, I just want to make sure we're talking apples to apples, and, you know, what dollars amount would people really kind of need to be, to be able to afford this?
Other questions from councilmembers? Yes, Member O'Shaughnessy?
Okay, since you brought up greenhouse gases and all of that.
Yes.
And you're putting in new kitchens, I have to ask, are you going to have an induction stove top, or an electric, or a gas?
So we have, well, it wouldn't be gas. We don't have gas in the building. It would either be electric or induction. Now, induction would have to have a 24-inch size model, so we're going with a smaller range model, except in the two-bedrooms that are 30s. So that would be the one thing. I don't know if the manufacturers have an induction that size in that more efficiency size, 24-inch width. So I could get back to on that, though. But there would be no gas. Yep.
Thanks. Yes, Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Can you clarify again? You talked about that this is 100% affordable, and then you talked about market rate. And so I am interpreting what you're saying to be, this is market rate, but it's affordable.
Correct.
Okay.
So I think, I think you're making a very good point. Affordable often is talked about as, in the scheme of the Planning Commission, and one of the commissioners put it very well, affordable with a capital A, as kind of the covenanted affordable, federal program, state program affordable.
Okay.
So this is from just a budget-friendly standpoint. Let's call it affordable like that with a small A, or I've heard, you know, attainable might be another word, or...
Well, I definitely liked your explanation of how that could be, because it's a existing building, you know, it's not a tear-down rebuild, it's not luxury, so you weren't describing it that way. And so I, that's kind of how I interpreted what you were saying. And so then my follow-up question to that is, I think you said you were intending to be here for 10 years? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, we've got a, internally, we've decided it's a 10-year hold for us.
Okay. So what happens after that, when you hit your 10-year hold mark?
We either continue to hold it, or at that point, we decide to sell it.
Okay. So at 10 years, if you were to sell?
Yes. I mean, we've talked with our group and our investors, saying, you know, be prepared, this is one that we want to hold for 10 years.
Okay. But if you did sell, any developer could purchase that, and it could be luxury townhomes at that point. They'd do whatever they wanted to with it.
Yeah, they could do whatever they wanted to.
Okay.
They could make it a hotel again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. With respect to the cost of covered parking, what would, what would it cost to be in compliance with the ordinance?
Well, for, for us, an average ramp costs around $25,000 per stall, so we run about $3.5 million with architectural engineering.
What would that, how would that affect your rents? And your target market, do you say we're missing in Edina?
Yes. In terms of, you know, when I talk about the Class B being, you don't have all the bells and whistles. One is you don't have the enclosed parking, which makes something that somebody's not going to pay as much for. With enclosed parking, carrying that extra, both debt and equity, we put in the project for our analysis, you know, probably it's be around $25,000, $30,000 a month that we'd have to look at on the rental side for what parking would cost.
Twenty-five to $30 extra per month?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Prompt any other questions from councilmembers? Prompt any other questions from council members? All right, let's stand by, Mr. Jutton. We're going to open this up now for public testimony. This is a public hearing, and we're going to take testimony from folks in the audience first, see if anybody wants to address the council on this matter. And reminder that you'll have three minutes, and when the yellow light goes on, you'll have thirty seconds left, so you should be thinking about wrapping up your comments. We treat everybody the same way here. All right, anybody want to come forward?
Good evening.
Would you give us your name and address, please?
I'm Will Riegerd, and I live in Edinburgh, seventy-six, twenty-one Edinburgh.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Will.
My concern is, not about the building or any of that, but is about safety, and how people are vetted to live in these apartments. It has to be really good. And one of the reasons I say that is there is hundreds of kids there during the summer and the rest of the year, and there's only like a fifty feet between that and, you know, where they have this recreational area for kids. And boy, you go over there, and there are kids everywhere. And I think we need to have safety for that. And the way to do it is to vet the people very strongly that are going to live there. I think that'd be welcome to have people that can be working people, but it has to be safe because of the children especially.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm not going to go too much beyond that, but I think other people could address that, too. Just that we have to think about that. Montessori school, you've got little, I don't know, five-year-olds, and they walk down Edinburgh Way during the day, they're all around, there's a play area right next to the building you're talking about, where all summer long, these kids play. And they have a teacher and twenty students, and you've got to watch those people so that nobody gets hurt, or grabbed, or anything awful. And so it's going to be a requirement of this building to be some pretty fine people living there, and that's...
Thank you, Will. Thank you. It'll just turn off by itself.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify? Please, come forward.
My name is Jan Bailey, and I'm at seventy-six oh six in, on York, in the development that he is also from. And this just arises, it might be a really stupid ques-
Can we get your unit number, too, please?
Pardon?
Your unit number?
Oh, seventy-two oh two.
Thank you.
And this may be a really stupid, old-fashioned question, because I'm not up on technology and new cars, but as a resident there who has underground garage, and really appreciates that, but being a former homeowner for some years, and appreciating garage there, but times when I couldn't, and knowing the need of inner-city people often for block, the old technology of block heaters, I don't know if that's still needed on newer cars, but I would think there would be some part of that population that would appreciate that in an open space like that. And I wonder if the developers might consider a small area at least, you know, where that would be held. And then also, I just wondered if the map that you showed up there, you mentioned, or somebody up here mentioned, or maybe the introducer mentioned, that there were trees in the islands, and having walked around there a lot, I would say, yes, there are, but the map didn't show those, and so I was just wondering if they're being taken out for some reason. And the other consideration I have is, as a person who's moved here from the center city with safety issues, all my life, center city pretty much, I look at that parking lot, and I think that it should not be walled in. The visibility from the street, at least at ground level, for safety sense, for people to be noticed so that things aren't happening in that parking lot without passer-bys or drivers by being able to see activity that, you know, could be occasionally nefarious anywhere. So I don't mean to sound really paranoid, I'm not, but those just seem like basic, helpful things to me.
Okay.
And otherwise, I appreciate the income level being asked, offered, and the reuse of something like that.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Bailey. Anyone else wish to come forward and testify? All right, let's check with the folks online that might want to testify regarding this matter.
I do have someone on the line. As a reminder, if you would like to speak, press star three on your telephone keypad, that will get you in the queue to speak. That's the asterisk symbol. There we go. All right, let me... Okay, that line is now open. Please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Josh Fingerman, and I live on fifty-six forty-six Interlocken Circle.
Go ahead with your comments.
Yeah, so I urge the city council to vote in favor of this project and now require enclosed parking. Affordable housing is like a national crisis, and even more so in Edina. Edina, the average house price is seven-hundred thousand dollars, and the new owners are offering to buy hundreds of units to the city at hundreds of dollars below competing Class A apartments. I don't think that we should enclose it for the previous reasons stated, and also, it's a big need for our city.
All right, thank you.
I have no other callers at this time.
Okay. One more opportunity for folks in the audience to come forward. Let's just hold on, Will. You're going to have a chance to submit something in writing if you want to supplement your oral testimony. We're going to leave that open for written submission. Go ahead.
Evening. Mayor and council members, my name is Steve Brown. I live at fifty-five twenty-eight Halifax Lane. My sole purpose in being here tonight is to urge you to support this proposed project and move it forward. I spoke at the Planning Commission, I gave all my reasons there. I won't repeat all those reasons, you probably have listened to that Planning Commission session. I did want to make the point that the folks who are going to live here are folks who, I think, most people would feel very comfortable living nearby. And I've passed out the sheet that had the eighty percent AMI for families of four, just to give a sense of what kinds of people would be able to live in this particular complex. The developers already pointed out that, in fact, because they have only, in general, one-bedroom and studio apartments, they're very, it's very unlikely there'll be families of four living in this complex. Nonetheless, I think it is worth noting that someone who's earning eighty percent of AMI does earn close to a hundred thousand dollars. And if they're a single individual, that could be a college nursing professor, it could be a physical therapist, could be a registered nurse. All those folks earn money that is below that hundred thousand dollar level. Those are the kinds of folks that I think everyone in Edina would feel very comfortable having as members of their community. And all the folks that were listed on the chart that the developer put forward are also people with jobs who, again, I think are folks who everybody in this community should feel comfortable living with. So I just want to make sure, as people think about who might be in those residence, they recognize that the folks who are living there are folks who are usually going to full-time jobs, or they're someone who's worked their entire life and is retired, and now is living off Social Security and whatever savings they have. I don't think we need to worry as much about the safety issues for this particular proposed building with an eighty percent AMI level of affordability. Again, my purpose is simply to urge you to support this very creative use of an older building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to testify? Got a few questions to ask, but I think what we should probably consider doing is closing the oral testimony on this portion of the public hearing, and leave it open until noon on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, for further written submissions, and then consider the staff request to continue the action to the December third, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
Some.
Second. Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds, that we close the oral testimony portion of the hearing today, and at noon on November twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, we close the written submission portion of the hearing, and we continue the action to the December third, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting for further actions. Is there any further discussion with respect to the motion stated? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried? Mr. Jutton, would you come back up, please? There's a couple of questions, I think, that popped up that you might be helpful on here while folks are in the audience. One is, you know, and I doubt you're different than any other landlord that's vetting your potential tenants, and what's the process?
Yeah, great question, and I meant to touch on that earlier. We use a standard screening process, we're going to look at four criteria. One's criminal, looking for violent sexual offenders, those are pretty much a non-negotiable. And, you know, if you've got a hundred parking tickets in the last two years, you're probably going to say you've got some issues, too. So we don't have a hard and fast rule on, say, misdemeanors, but it's more just the pattern, the trend you see and that. We're really going to look, so we're going to look criminal, we're going to look at creditworthiness, how do you handle your payments, debt payment. And again, we don't set a minimum score, we want to see trends, you know, was it a problem recently, or was it a problem in the past? You know, what's the size of the problem potentially you're carrying in your debt, you know, might be affecting your FICO score up and down. And then we're going to look at rental history, if you've got a rental history. If you're a younger person, you're probably not going to come out of college or come out of high school and go into trade school, you might not have rental history. So that's not one, you know, I was having in a situation like that, we might have to look at a parent as a co-signer. We've got some history, or can vouch for the history financially. And the last thing we're looking at is going to be your income. You know, if you're, how do you make your income? Where's your income source from? Is it a W-2, or are you self-employed, or are you a gig worker? And then we've got to use other methods to verify it. So we look at those four criteria to come with a leasing decision. That's a standard policy we have across all our rental units, so it's...
What's your typical period of occupancy by your tenants? They move in, and how long do they typically stay?
I like to say, and my partner Abe is a professional, Marcus and Milchapp, in apartment leasing and sales and whatnot, I think, what's the industry standard on turnover?
Industry standard is, anyway, between forty and fifty percent is the average turnover rate per year.
Forty percent turnover per year?
On average. Industry standard, I think, apartments that Pat and I own together, I think we're...
Around seventy-five percent.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, say, on the apartments we own together, it's, it's closer to seventy-five percent, you know, retention is a twenty-five percent turnover. And typically, when I see that, I look at a lot of the buildings and talk to a lot of owners every day, every week, to me, that's a figure that stuck out, and if I may, you know, just talk about Pat as a manager, it's off the charts from what I compare to other managers. So, you know, again, typically, you see close to half a building turnover every year. Our tenants are staying, seventy-five percent of them are staying. So that talks to their perception and their feeling of feeling safe, feeling answered, feeling response time, if something does come up, there's a leak, whatever it is, things get taken care of, and Pat shows up.
So you've got about twenty-five percent turnover per year, but the seventy-five percent stay there typically, how long?
Average tendency, about three years.
Okay, okay. You know, I thought Ms. Bailey raised an interesting question that we shouldn't ignore just because of climate change, and that is the snow removal. You know, you think about, you talked about the cost of structured parking, and we understand that, too. And I think she was actually referencing, well, gee, how about not structured parking, but covered parking, or how are you going to clean the lot if the lot's full of cars? What's the strategy there? How do you, how do you do that on a snowy Minnesota winter day?
Yeah, good question. Typically, you got to do, what they call service plows, so get your corridors, your drives, all plowed out, and then once your car is empty, then clean out the parking stalls. So typically, we do that during the day, when most of your cars are out. Now, if you've got a situation where you've got a big dump, you know, a twelve-incher, then you've got to start noticing tenants and say, all right, half can park on, you know, come up with a coordinated plan of where you can encamp parks, and you can load the snow out of the spaces and get the parking lot functional again. In a ramp, typically, what you're going to do is you're going to plow off your top deck, and then you've got fences that open, and you plow off, and you create big hills through the course of winter, and then just kind of side-plow your blow-ins on your lower decks as it comes in. But still the same issue, you've got a cycle issue with residential, whether it's a ramp or a lot, you've got mostly people there in the night, and during the day, you're going to see fewer cars there, so most are clean-out plowing is going to be during the day.
Be the same sort of technique that Mr. Lewis mentioned, some of these other buildings are using that have only surface parking in the neighborhood, I take it.
In terms of how they plow, yeah, yeah.
And then the other question that Ms. Bailey had was, you've got trees on the islands now, are they going to be removed, or are they going to remain?
Some of those are ash and are dead, so they got to get removed and replaced. But any tree that's there and alive stays, and if it's dead, it's going to be replaced with a new tree. So I think we have like a dozen dead ash trees that might want to worth carrying, and the city tree inventory staff that need to be replaced.
Those are ash trees?
Yeah, smaller ash, yeah. They've all got pink flags on now. They're on our survey, they're all IDed on our survey, that were shown at the original presentation, and you'll also have that in your packet.
Did I miss any questions that people asked? Okay, thank you for that. So, folks, if you want to submit anything further to the council, you can do it through the city website, and we'll take testimony, written testimony through noon on the twenty-fourth of November, and then we'll continue this action to the December third, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting, and make a determination then. So thanks for being with us this evening. All right, we're going to move on now to the next matter, and that is, excuse me, in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, we have to deal with something we really haven't wanted to deal with, and that is cannabis business. The state has mandated that we have to have a certain number of retail cannabis operations in our city, and every other city in the state of Minnesota, and we've been on a moratorium for about the last year, and we're trying to make sure that we craft an ordinance that will do the best job of providing opportunities for people in the cannabis business, but also providing the sort of protections we have with liquor, for example. So we're going to have a staff presentation on that now, and think about approving a particular ordinance dealing with cannabis business, so. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Happy to be here again tonight to talk about cannabis, even though most people do not want to talk about cannabis. Specifically, we're going to be talking about ordinance amendments regarding registration and zoning. So this is mostly the same presentation that was given at the November sixth public hearing, so because of that, I will not be going through all of it. However, there are some additional slides that were added based on the questioning that was received during the public hearing that did not receive answers during that public hearing on the sixth. So with that, let me just scroll through. So first, to address the question about including hours of operations within our drafted ordinance, during the- during the public hearing on the 6th, we had drafted the ordinance with OCM's model language in mind, but did not explicitly include that model language within the ordinance draft. After reviewing OCM resources, staff had decided to recommend operating hours be more in line with liquor. Operating hours after hearing council feedback on relating everything back to tobacco and liquor to keep everything as consistent. In that way, we recommend going with 10 to 10, Monday through Sunday. Liquor had a few discrepancies on Sunday sale, but far and wide, that is pretty closely with what they operate on today, and staff has now drafted the ordinance with this explicitly To address a community, or, excuse me, a resident concern about the potential for municipal retail stores for cannabis, we can operate a single municipal cannabis store, but the city of Adana is not interested in this venture at this time for three reasons. One, Minnesota is the first state to allow this type of municipal cannabis retailer, and so the practicality is largely unexplored in that regard. Cannabis retailers are also largely cash businesses, and so this could be quite a complicated venture for the city to manage in that way. And then lastly, opening a municipal retailer would not count towards our minimum of five minimum retailers for cannabis businesses. In other words, we would not be able to oversee municipal cannabis in the same way that we oversee municipal liquor. And then for the last slide update, I apologize, this is different from the posted presentation because I got updated information from our police department, and so when we talk about enforcement for people who may be using cannabis in, on public property, obviously, against the law, you can only be doing that on a private, in a private residence or on private property, excuse me, and OCM has maintained a vast majority of authority for cannabis enforcement, as we talked about during the public hearing on the 6th. And so the city of Adana's enforcement window is, enforcement window, excuse me, is relatively small, and that petty misdemeanor is about as large of a citation we can control for locally. So what that means is, if there was a potential call coming into dispatch that is asking for someone to go out and check on this person who could be intoxicated and using cannabis on public property, police would go to the call location, need to observe who was potentially using cannabis without search, as residents can legally possess cannabis, and observe that use on the public property. So that is a really hard determination for a lot of police to make, especially when we think about calls being determined by life safety as the priority, of course. In addition, in addition to that, testing is not relied upon in this situation because a resident, even if a tox screen came back positive for THC, the resident could argue that they were using that cannabis safely in a private residence or private property before going out to that public property. So it puts, it puts our law enforcement in a pretty difficult situation to enforce. And then again, that enforcement would be up to an officer discretion, so it could be a warning, could be a citation if they were actually seeing that use take place, but it's up for a little bit of debate, you could say. Here is our recommendation for tonight, November 19th. We are asking you to grant the first reading of both ordinance amendments and then waive the second readings of both ordinance amendments. We have showcased the planning commission recommendation, again, that was showcased at the 11-6 public hearing, and with that, I would like to talk a little bit at you all again, a little bit more, to answer some more questions that went unaddressed at the public hearing on the 6th.
Very good.
So, and Addison will be addressing three questions too that he addressed with zoning or other different issues that came up at the public hearing. So first, how can testing for cannabis intoxication for public safety be enhanced to be accurate by the time cannabis retailers are licensed? So this is largely, again, under state jurisdiction, and the state is currently working through the issues of two different types of cannabis intoxication tests. So earlier this year, the Office of Traffic Safety and the Minnesota State Patrol launched a pilot project aimed at answering questions of how will law enforcement test for cannabis intoxication of drivers? Drug recognition evaluators, commonly referred to as DREs, from law enforcement agencies statewide, were trained to use two different oral, fluid, roadside testing instruments. The devices, the Sotoxa Oral Fluid Mobile Analyzer and the Drager Drug Test 5000 detect the presence of cannabis or other drugs in a driver. They are also training DREs on the two devices to compare how the two work in practice, and the goal of the study overall is to provide state lawmakers with solid information so they can move forward with making sound decisions on the policy they want to bring forward. Can the city engage in municipal cannabis? As we just went over, yes, we can. However, the city of Adana is not looking at that venture at this time, but if a city were to submit all of the required application information to the Office of Cannabis Management, meet minimum requirements for a licensure, and pay the applicable application and license fees, the city could operate one. What is a temporary cannabis event and what conditions can we set for these events? So temporary cannabis events definitions remain to be unseen, a bit of an unknown on how these events will take place. OCM is still developing some of the rulemaking and guidance as they talk about these types of events. However, a jurisdiction may establish standards for temporary cannabis events, which the event organizer must meet, including restricting or prohibiting any onsite consumption. If there are public health, safety, or welfare concerns associated with a proposed cannabis event, a jurisdiction would presumably be authorized to deny approval of that event. And within our ordinance, we can explicitly list language that says, if it meets our city code, it will be granted; if it does not meet city code, it will not be granted, and here are the reasons why, and we will give that to the applicant. In addition, we will also have the option of saying that temporary cannabis events can only be held at a certain place within the city of Adana, and also, temporary cannabis events could be written in the ordinance language to be held between a certain hour of time or a certain window in the day. So it couldn't just be a 24-hour temporary cannabis palooza, I guess. These events, at the end of the day, as Assistant City Manager Lance pointed out at the public hearing, these events will still require a license from the Office of Cannabis Management before coming to the city asking for a local registration. So next, how do we ensure or enforce safety with these cannabis products within the community? What can we do to ensure an engaged community that uses these products safely? So first, the Cannabis and Substance Use Prevention Grant, which amounted to be around $100,000, I just got that number from Public Health, will allow the city of Adana's Public Health Division to formulate some kind of educational awareness program to help ensure safe use of cannabis within the community and greater region. The program would be structured to focus using cannabis in a guided, safe way for those interested, and this grant opportunity currently is slated to be one time, however, there's a lot of conversation about a future hope that it is annual and renewed each year. Police will be involved in the enforcement and response of use on public property, again, we talked about that petty misdemeanor, and compliance checks will offer important opportunities for public health divisions to ensure cannabis businesses are operating in the community as intended through OCM's licensing, rulemaking, and enforcement guidelines. Lastly, ensuring community safety as recreational cannabis finds more resolution for the unknowns that they see today is going to be a really big learning curve for all municipalities in the state and the state Office of Cannabis Management that will continue to require close collaboration with all organizations. Can you explain some of the regulations that address safety concerns other than the potential use of buffers? So local governments may suspend the local retail registration of a cannabis or hemp business if that business is determined to not be operating in compliance with the local ordinance authorized, excuse me, by Chapter 342, or if the operation of the business poses an immediate threat to health and safety of the public. The local government must immediately notify the Office of Cannabis Management of the suspension if it does occur, and the Office of Cannabis Management will review the suspension and may reinstate or take enforcement action of that registration. Per state law, the Office of Cannabis Management will establish an expedited complaint process during the rulemaking process to receive, review, read, and respond to complaints made by a local unit of government about a cannabis business. Upon promulgation of these rules, the Office of Cannabis Management will publish the complaint process. At a minimum, the expedited complaint process shall require the office to provide an initial response to the complaint within seven days and perform any necessary inspections within 30 days. Within this process, if a local government notifies the Office of Cannabis Management that a cannabis business poses an immediate threat to the health or safety of the public, the office must respond within one business day. Lastly, to answer this question, Jaren Zek of Adana's Police Department has been appointed by the governor as an expert in municipal law enforcement with advanced training in impairment detection and evaluation, to be part of the Cannabis Advisory Council, which reviews national cannabis policy, examines the effectiveness of state cannabis policy, reviews developments in the cannabis industry and hemp consumer industry, reviews developments in the study of cannabis flower and other items, takes public testimony, and at the end of the day, makes recommendations to the Office of Cannabis Management. The possibility of smoking cannabis on sidewalks and public places. Again, we addressed this a little bit in our updated presentation, so I will move on to the next one, which was again addressed in our updated presentation, including the hours of operation in the drafted ordinance. Yes, we are, but we are no longer defaulting to the Office of Cannabis Management's model language, we are instead going with that Monday through, excuse me, Monday through Sunday, 10 to 10, I'm talking too fast, sorry. And with that, I would ask Addison Lewis to come up and address a few other questions.
Hey, we want to thank you for your diligence, taking notes here a couple of weeks ago.
Yep, and we've got a few more here, too. So there was a question about what is considered a school and what is considered a daycare, where would a preschool or a Montessori school fall under with respect to the buffers? So, the ordinance that you have in your packet, for the proposed ordinance, states that the buffer for schools would just apply to K through 12 schools, so it wouldn't include preschools. However, preschools are licensed by the Minnesota Department of Human Services, the same as daycares, so they would be subject to the buffer for a daycare. If a Montessori school provided education at the kindergarten level or above, then it would be subject to that buffer for schools. There was a question about what happens if a daycare opens within the minimum buffer distance of a cannabis business? So the buffer would prevent a new cannabis business from opening within the buffer distance of an existing daycare, but not the other way around. So if a daycare opened within the buffer of an existing cannabis business, the cannabis business could continue, but if it ever went away for more than a year, a new cannabis business could not open in that same place if the daycare was still there. And then lastly, there was a question about warning labels on products. So generally, all cannabis products have to include certain information on the label, so include, would include a universal symbol established by the Office of Cannabis Management indicating that the package or container contains cannabis. We need a verification that the product was tested in accordance with state law and meets the applicable standards. It needs to include a statement about keep the product out of reach of children. And then lastly, they need to also provide customers with information about impairment effects and health risks, a statement about not operating motor vehicle or heavy machinery while under the influence, as well as resources to answer questions about cannabis products and substance use disorder treatment options. So with that, I think that was all the questions we heard at the last meeting that we wanted to follow up on. Again, the request tonight is a motion to approve the first reading and waive second readings, but we'd have, be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Member Jackson?
So, the draft that we have in our packet still has the buffer for the parks and the As I'm looking at this, I found the testimony about the buffer for the daycare persuasive. I also got some additional community feedback on that afterwards, so I wish that I had an updated ordinance, or is this an ordinance, correct?
Correct.
To look at, but I would argue that I would like to keep the buffer for a state-licensed For clarification purposes...
On the cannabis zoning buffer maps, is it not there?
Those maps should be...
I thought it saw daycare on the buffer map.
Yep, so the current ordinance includes a 500-foot buffer from all of them, so the buffers are included in the ordinance just for your consideration. If you want to get rid of those, it's easier for you to tell us as part of your motion to just strike that, rather than if we hadn't included them, to go in and add that, because there is some kind of specific wording in there. So just for transparency, we didn't want to be kind of making up new wording on the fly if you wanted to add a buffer. It's much easier for you, as part of your motion, to just tell us, you know, we want to adopt the ordinance as proposed, but with the buffer for schools removed, or whatever you decide.
You were saying that you favor the buffer.
I favor the buffer for daycare. I thought the attractions in park, that the point, that it was very difficult to figure out how to measure that, was a point well taken, but I think keeping the 500-foot buffer for daycares, I'm in favor of.
Call some Aragno, I think you wanted to comment.
Yeah, I did. I think, I think I was just going to kind of reiterate that what I understood is that for the standards for cannabis retailer, what section is this, but it's part D, where it talks about the 500 feet from any attraction within a public park, it sounds like that will be very hard to manage. So what I'm hearing is it's staff recommendation that we likely strike that when we're making a motion to approve this ordinance if that's what happens. And I would agree with that, and my recommendation also, based on the testimony and discussions that we've had, would be to also maintain what's in here today regarding the daycares. So, plus one to what Councilmember Jackson said.
So with respect to what's on the screen in front of us, you would, the two of you are suggesting that we leave schools, daycares, and residential treatment facilities in with proposed buffers, but delete attractions and parks. Is that correct?
I'll just clarify real quick from a staff perspective, that our recommendation, we was not a strong one regarding the buffers, but we were just proposing it as-is with buffers for everything, but that element is a fair consideration because it will be hard to administer. So there isn't a staff recommendation to necessarily do that, to take it out, but we are okay with that because it will be difficult.
Member Risher?
I just wanted to recommend that we let Assistant City Manager Lance comment on...
So Member Risher down juggling in the park is an attraction, and we want to make sure she...
You know, it is interesting, though, because if it's a physical attraction, and I was thinking about this, because you could say, you know, our park pavilions would constitute places where, you know, people gather, you know, and there is a logic if there's a physical and, you know, aspect to it. So the buffer and the maps already take that into account, I believe, Drew, with the parks. So I'm kind of tempted to just leave it in, because it's easier if there is a problem down the road, we could come back and we could revise it. So just kind of thinking along that way, but I don't really have any strong feelings on this one.
Member Pierce, any thoughts on in or out with respect to attractions and parks when we have a supportive map that defines them?
I am in support of not including them, but my reason behind it is I really think buffers, to a certain extent, are fairly arbitrary. And so I actually think we had feedback from a resident who was for the daycare, so... And so I actually think we had feedback from a resident who was for the daycare, so it sounded, you know, good to me, so let's include daycares. But I think it's hard to manage in parks. I don't know that we get any value out of having it there. And I think it's fairly arbitrary, so I would, I'd be supportive. And I understand you're saying staff is not, it's six of one, half dozen of the other, but the point that you are continually making is that it's difficult to manage it. And so with that guidance from city staff, I would exclude that, but keep daycare.
I think from Ms. Johnson's presentation, was it clear that if you got a resident complaint about somebody, they were down in the park and sitting on a park bench, and saw someone smoking in the park, which is a public place, and didn't stop smoking, and they could call the police, and the police could come to the park.
Yeah, correct.
Regardless of whether there was an attraction in the park or not, they could still come to the park because it's a public place.
Yep, and just to be clear, the buffers are from the location of the business, so it would be from the property line of the business. But yes, you're correct, you cannot smoke in a public place.
Okay, I was heading a little bit mentally the direction that Member Risher was heading, but I'd be, you know, I was thinking, leave it all in until we see how it operates and then back off, but I can also see the counterargument of just getting rid of attractions and parks right now and leave it, leave the buffers applying to schools, daycares, and residential treatment facilities only, revise the maps. Is that where we're headed? So what do you need for, let me see here, what you need for a motion? It's a single motion, it's a motion to approve ordinance 2024-08 amending city code, Chapter 36 zoning cannabis business, and ordinance 2024-09 amending city code, Chapter 12 cannabis business registration, grant first reading. Do you want to waive second reading, or just grant first reading?
That's up to you, I guess. If you're comfortable, I mean, if you're comfortable with the ordinances that are in the packet, I guess unless you want to direct us to make changes and bring it back at the next meeting, we could do that. But if you're comfortable with the ordinances, then we would suggest just first reading and waive second reading.
Either way, it seems to me like we could deal with the buffer issue right now, either grant first, or, you know, tell you to fix it, and come back to us, and just grant first reading, or we could fix it right now as part of the overall motion and waive second reading.
What I think I'm hearing you saying is that you want to leave it as it is right now with a 500-foot buffer from all four of those uses, is that right?
No, take out the attractive part.
Take it out from parks, okay, got it.
So the motion would be to approve ordinance 2024-08 amending city code, Chapter 36 zoning cannabis business. Is that language, which part of the code is that language in dealing with buffer?
Yeah, so it's just under the special requirements for, you know, in the PCD district, it's like provision D, I mean, we could just strike.
2409 or 2408? Which resolution is it in?
Yeah, ordinance 2024-08.
Okay.
Yep, that's in the zoning ordinance.
So the motion would be to approve ordinance 2024-08, but limit the buffer zones to the three delineated categories by the council, which would amend city code, Chapter 36 zoning cannabis business, and then adopt ordinance 2024-09 amending city code, Chapter 12 cannabis business registration, and waive second reading. Is there a motion of that effect?
Agreed.
Second. Remember, Aragno moves, remember, Pierce seconds the adoption of the motion stated. Any further discussion with respect to the motion stated? All those in favor of granting the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? The motion's adopted? Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work on this. This was, it was an important year to have, to be able to figure out what we wanted to do to comply with the state law. All right, well, the next matter we have in front of us, this is always an interesting situation when we've sold some bonds. And I saw Nick Anhut, our public finance advisor from Ellers, come into the room, and he's been busy today selling a couple of bonds for us, and the first one that he's going to talk about is embodied in Resolution 2024-100, and it 100, and it involves the potential awarding of the sale of $29,535,000 of the general obligation bonds for a couple of different purposes. And Patao, our finance director, is here to start the conversation and tell us why we needed to go out into the markets to borrow some money, and I'll let you handle that, and I'll turn it to you now, our finance director, Patao.
Good evening. Not as quite interesting as cannabis, but what I have in front of you is, I know that there's two agenda items. The first one is for the CIP and sales tax bond, and then the second item is for the 2024C HIA bond. We will do both in the same presentation, so you guys don't have, we don't have to flip back between, to a very similar presentation. So with that being said, I have with us here tonight, like Mayor Hublin said, Nick Anhut from Ellers, who will give you what is our bond sale results for improvements that we will be doing, as well as the HIA bond. So with us, Nick.
All right, thank you, Director Tao. And welcome, Mr. Anhut.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates, financial advisors to the city of Edina. And as mentioned, we have two bond sales that were held on behalf of the city this morning, and I will go over both in tandem, and then allow you to answer, or ask your questions and take action on two different resolutions awarding each. So 2024B were bonds issued for a variety of city infrastructure projects, about $29 million worth of funding, 17 million to convert to permanent financing, a series of bonds that were issued in '22 to finance the acquisition of the Fire Station 2 site, as well as provide some funding for the design and site improvements for that project. Those were temporary bonds that we're converting to a long-term permanent financing, layering it on top of the financing that the city executed this summer for construction of that project. That will be repaid from a dedicated property tax levy that you have adopted within your preliminary levy for collection starting next year. And then the other component was 12 million in funding for the sales tax projects that were approved by the voters through a referendum of roughly $71 million worth of projects that were approved. Through that measure, we're providing a funding for 12 million in this tranche of bonds, and they will be repaid exclusively from sales tax revenues that are being collected as we speak. The 2024C is a taxable financing, that's why it's separate from the other two. It is a general obligation bond, but because it provides a benefit directly to specific property owners within the community, the members of the Edina West Condominium Association, that financing does need to be taxable. It doesn't qualify for tax exemption, but it still will benefit from the city's full faith and credit backing as a general obligation bond. Those improvements were authorized by the council through passage of an ordinance and establishing a housing improvement area back in 2023. They are complete with their construction for their projects, and part of the agreement with the condominium association is that the city would reimburse them for those costs after the fact by issuing this bond to take out the construction loan that they have incurred for that project, and that will happen pending your award of this transaction this evening. Those bonds will be repaid from a housing improvement area fees. Those fees are collected directly from those property owners and are a line item on their property tax bill, and so those will be paid over the course of the next 20 years to provide the debt service for this bond. So the council authorized both of these sales, and it's October 15th meeting. In the time in between that, we've been working with staff to verify the funding amounts, put together the preliminary bond repayment structures, the offering documents, and then we also received positive affirmations from both S&amp;P and Moody's, who provide their credit evaluations for the city of Edina and your financing, and I'm happy to say that they both affirmed the city's top-notch rating, the AAA ratings that both of them apply to the city. These are the highest possible ratings that are assigned both to municipalities like cities, counties, even the states, sovereign nations, and even corporate, and their financings receive a credit rating, and this is the top of that echelon. The cities maintain these ratings for over 20 years, and we expect that to continue. They do evaluate not only the current financial health of the city, but we also talk with them in these evaluations about next steps, future considerations, the next year's budget, future debt plans, and even through those discussions, they saw fit to affirm that high rating on these financings. So good news on that front, and definitely led to the results that we see today. We received 13 bids on the 24B bonds. It was a sizable transaction, it attracted a lot of attention across the market. Just for context, you know, in years past, it's not unheard of for us to get six, maybe seven bids. We did receive 11 bids on the bonds that were issued earlier this year, so we've added two more potential bidders to the mix here. And as you'll see, a very tight spread between the top and even closer to the bottom. UBS Financial Services was the winning bid at a 3.76 indicated rate, so that's the, basically the rate that would take into account all 30 years of repayment for this bond. Jenny Montgomery Scott, less than a basis point difference on the cover bid. The top bid came from KeyBank Capital at 4.1%, so a 0.34% spread, percentage point spread between the low bid and the high. Not as much of a reception on the taxable financing, but we did receive three bids. Not unexpected to receive less interest from the marketplace on that, due in part because it was taxable, but also it was a much smaller size, and when you have a taxable financing that's spread out over 20 years, it's not exactly as enticing to that specific segment of the market. But we did receive good bids, and certainly a competitive result. Baird came in with the low bid at 5.01%. Again, the reason, the difference in rates, it's a taxable financing and not benefiting from the tax exemption, so that is to be expected, that there would be a higher rate applied to this transaction. Again, the spread between the low bid and the high, you know, a tenth of a percentage point. With these results, the resolutions that have been prepared for you will lock in the payment terms at the pricing that are being offered, as well as the amounts that we're borrowing. So the final size on the 24B issue will be 27,720,000. That will provide the same amount of funding for this, but it reflects the reoffering premium that was included in the bid, as well as the final transactional costs, the cost of issuance, and the underwriter's discount that was bid for that bond purchase. The final 30-year calculated true interest cost when we let the dust settle is 3.78%. That's actually fairly comparable to the financing that we did earlier this summer. So a good result, again, in tune, I think, with where we're at in the market right now. We have seen rates kind of climb a little bit over the course of the last month, but they're fairly steady on the tax exempt side, and this is certainly an expected result. 24C will resize the principal just slightly to 3,65,000. This will provide about 2.98 million to pay off the construction loan and the HIA program costs that have been incurred for that project, and is itself, as well, a good result, and the final 20-year calculated true interest cost, pretty much identical to the bid at 5.015% for that. So for the council's consideration, two different resolutions, again, awarding the sale of the bonds based on the terms proposed from the lowest bidders, UBS for the 24B series, the larger transaction, and then Baird and their syndicate, that they represent a variety of different underwriters that are participating in that bid for the 24C bond issue. Those resolutions will have been vetted with your bond attorneys at Dorsey and Whitney. They have been updated from the packets to reflect the actual bids and the pricing that have been proposed, and they will lock in the proposed rates and amounts, and we anticipate that we'll close on these transactions pending your approval on December 12th of this year. So be happy to stand for any questions from the council, but we recommend that you take action to approve these positive results. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anhut. Let me see if any of our colleagues have questions for you at this point in time. Thorough presentation, thank you. Our finance director, have anything supplemental that she wants to add?
No.
No, not at this point in time, okay. Questions for council members? All right, so you want to handle these in two separate motions, I guess, so the first one would be, and good work, by the way, and apparently it came out about where you thought it would, in terms of the borrowing on the larger obligation. So let's go to the motion to approve Resolution 2024-100, awarding the sale of 29,535,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2024B to UBS Financial. Is there a motion of that effect?
Agreed.
Second.
Remember, Aragno moves, and Member Pierce seconds the approval of Resolution 2024-100, awarding the sale of 29,535,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2024B to UBS Financial. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, 2024-100, stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next is our motion to approve Resolution 2024-101, awarding the sale of $3,220,000 in general obligation housing improvement bonds, Series 2024C, to Baird Syndicate.
Agreed.
Second.
Remember, Aragno moves, Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-101, which would award the sale of $3,220,000 in general obligation housing improvement bonds, Series 2024C, to Baird Syndicate. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? That motion is also adopted. Thank you for your good work, both our finance director and her key team, as well as our public finance people. Thank you. And you'll be sticking around, Mr. Anhut, I think we've got some things coming up that we may need your expert assistance on. So the next thing we're going to do in this portion of the agenda is discuss something that we talked about, enacted on in the, when we sat as the HRA last week, and our economic development manager, Bill Nuenendorf, has this matter, and this is the potential approval of Resolution 2024-78, which would establish the 72nd and France Number Three Tax Increment Financing District relative to the Enclave Companies and Lifestyle Communities project on what we call the old Macy's Home Store site. And I'm going to turn now to Manager Nuenendorf to get us started on this conversation.
Yes, thank you, good evening. So there's two items tonight, a resolution, 2024-78, and then separately, there's three redevelopment agreements. What I'd recommend and ask this evening is that we listen to testimony and ask questions about both before we take action on either of them. They're integrated, they go together, so I will walk through my presentation fastly but thoroughly. This evening is our fifth conversation about this project in the last several months, so there's not a lot of, in fact, there's no new information. We've discussed this predominantly at the HRA board meetings, where we got into some of the nitty-gritty of the financing, some of the benefits, and some of the terms, so I'll run through that this evening. Everything's in the packet, but I'm not going to go through it all because there's just far too much, but rest assured, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer the questions. And of course, we have our full complement of team members here tonight. I've been assisted by Jay Lindgren at Dorsey and Whitney, focusing on the legal parameters, and Nick Anhut at Ellers Associates, looking at the financing provisions of this agreement, and also Stephanie Hawkinson, my staff colleague, was integral to integrate all the affordable housing terms and requirements. And then also our developers, the folks at Enclave, Patrick Brahma at Enclave Companies, Ben Landhauser at Lifestyle Communities. So we're all ready for questions whenever you are, but I'll jump into the, into the presentation. So the first item is this resolution. This pertains to the adoption of a TIF financing plan. This plan was first prepared back in August. It was distributed to the school, the county held a public hearing, went to the planning commission. Essentially, this document establishes and documents the BUT-4 test, and it reaches the conclusions, several conclusions, actually. Number one, that the site qualifies to even be considered for tax increment financing. It then establishes boundaries of this district, time limits, and also a budget cap, and it's all based on the BUT-4 test. The findings that we've reached, and we recommend you support, are that BUT-4, the use of tax increment financing. reached, and we recommend you support, are that BUT4 the use of tax increment financing. We don't believe the approved project will be able to secure the debt and equity needed to be built. And also BUT4 the use of TIF, we don't believe that the economic benefits and the physical site improvements that benefit the community will be able to be realized. As you go through your consideration, a couple of questions to keep in mind. A lot of it comes down to public benefit, and whether or not this proposal and this agreement creates a TIF district that enables a suitable amount of public benefit. Now, that's not a state law, that's the ADINA test. State law says we can use TIF as long as we follow the state parameters, but in ADINA, we also apply the public benefit test. Is there enough public benefit that's delivered at the developer's expense, not at our initial expense? And then finally, is the use of tax increment financing reasonable to achieve this redevelopment project? It's gone through the procedures, through the planning commission and city council, for more than a year and a half now. Before a proposal was reached that abided by the city's standards, our guidelines, our policies, the state laws as well. So those are a couple of the key questions to keep in mind. And the process is quite extensive. It's the same process, it has not changed. It's dictated by state law. Number one, we have to create that TIF plan, that TIF financing plan. The first stop with that draft plan is to our school district and to the county, because they're also partners in this planning commission. We held a public hearing, went to the HRA board. Tonight's the final step, and that's seeking your approval of this TIF plan. The second step is actually allocating and directing how those dollars that are collected in the futures will be spent. And that's where we have three redevelopment proposals with you tonight, one for each of the quadrants, one, I guess not quadrants, one for each of the three pieces of the site. And that's a separate action that was approved by the HRA board last week, but conditioned on this final conversation and final considerations. So, ADINA has used TIF for going on 50 years, starting, I believe, in 1974. Currently, there's 11 TIF districts that are still in existence in the city. Those are shown on the map here. And in the bar chart, that shows the degree to which TIF is used in ADINA as compared to our peers elsewhere in Hennepin County. And this is one comparison where I like ADINA being on the low end of the range. We tend to use TIF a lot less than our peers and colleagues. Currently, there's about 1.6% of our tax base is involved in a tax increment district. While that number changes year to year, we're consistently, as a community, towards the lower end of that range. The site we're talking about, we've seen it before. It's the existing Macy's Furniture Store, built in the late 1970s, an eight-acre parcel with a single tenant building, or single tenant user, and a whole lot of asphalt parking lot. This is an overview of the approved plan that's worked its way through the city council and the planning commission, taking that large site, splitting it up into four building pads, the northwest, the southwest, and then the two buildings on the east are grouped together from a construction perspective. And a lot of this is public benefit, and that's really when we negotiate, as staff, when we negotiate these TIF agreements, we try to drive as much public benefit as possible. And when we measure public benefit, we look at our codes, our standards, and our policies. So the Greater Southdale Plan, the Affordable Housing Policy, our Sustainable Building Policies, our Comprehensive Plan are all factored into this. Couple renderings of the site in case you have questions. And I wanted to just make a mention about this rendering. So this is the most recent concept sketch of a potential pedestrian crossing that gets people across France Avenue without having to dodge the eight lanes of traffic. Now, this is still a concept, but it's been around for going on 20 years. With this TIF plan, we've structured both the TIF district, as well as the TIF agreements with the developers, to enable financing for this type of improvement if you, as a body, direct us to go in that direction. And we're not there yet. We're not seeking final approvals, but as we've negotiated this, we made sure that the door is open if we want to do something like this in the future. The TIF plan itself is shown here, the geographic boundaries. It's limited to just the site, the 7235 France Avenue site. It, of course, does include the adjacent rights of way on France Avenue. It's a 25-year term that begins in 2028 and would then expire 25 years later. When we use TIF in ADINA, part of what makes it such a compelling option to consider is the dramatic increase in that tax base. So right now, the tax capacity of the existing site is about $276,000. When this project is completed, based on our current estimates, it's expected to have a tax capacity at nearly $4 million, or a growth factor of 14x. Not just double, not just triple, but 14. That's where it's, from an economic development perspective, it just makes a whole lot of sense to grow and strengthen the tax base. I mentioned that the TIF plan sets up a spending cap. So, we've estimated that over the 25-year life of this district, we'll collect nearly $81 million. Now, that's the incremental tax. That doesn't include the base taxes that goes to the city, the school, the state, the county, and everybody else. And this TIF plan also identifies generally how we think those funds will be used, and that's shown on the chart here on the right. The vast majority of the expenses go towards construction costs, either by the developer or potentially by the city, if we choose to do a public improvement. But also, keep in mind that just as Mr. Anhut described a few minutes ago, we're borrowing money. Either the city's borrowing money, or the developer's borrowing money, and the bank demands interest. So certainly, a lot of the tax increment monies will be directed towards interest payments on whatever type of debt is issued. One other interesting revenue source from this project is not TIF. So a project of this scale creates just under $10 million in fees paid by the developer to the city. So that's about $3 million in park fees that are paid upfront when they pull a building permit. That can be used anywhere in the city where the park department chooses to make that investment. Also, just under $4 million in water fees and sewer fees to keep the pipes running all throughout the city in good shape. We've also negotiated in this particular deal an agreement where the developer will make annual payments in the range of $80,000 to support the ongoing operations at Centennial Lakes Park. So just a reminder that while those are not TIF dollars, without TIF, the city won't recognize those dollars. We also held a public hearing. Several weeks ago, we held the hearing, took input in person, online, and through the internet, as we always do. Quick summary there, I've got the full digest of all the comments that are in your packet. But a few main things to note. Number one is, over the last couple months, we've not received any comments or any concerns from Hennepin County. That had no questions about the use of TIF on this location. We had no comments or concerns raised by the Richfield School District, who also governs this area. The comments we did receive during, from the general public, for the most part, were just concerned or outright opposed to the use of TIF as a philosophical perspective. There were some concerns that they would prefer more green space, maybe the place could, maybe the site could become a park. And a few comments that did weigh in, saying that they do support the use of TIF if it's used to achieve bold outcomes. And I thought that was a really interesting way to phrase it, and that's something I think ADINA has demonstrated its capabilities over history. So for the TIF plan, our findings are summarized here. In conclusion, we do not think it's reasonably expected that the proposed development with all the public benefits would be able to be constructed without the use of TIF. That's our finding for that first resolution. And then in regards to the actual agreements with the developers, and that's the whole reason that we're considering TIF. So the developers are proposing to invest over $300 million in the site, between acquiring it, clearing the site, all the cleanup, and then building the four new buildings. It's been a rigorous review process, going on 18, 19 months at this point. And the developer has shared their financials with us on several occasions. We've worked and relied heavily on the folks at Ellers to scrutinize their budgets, to look at those costs, and confirm that they indeed do have a financing gap. And when we look at the overall project, we find that the financial gap is just under $23 million. That's a lot of money, but this is a massive project. And tax increment financing can be used to fill that gap so that the developers can secure that private sector debt and equity to actually build this. In the packet, there's the summary of all the different public benefits. I'm going to just focus on a couple slides here, and that's the public space. This is something we really see as transformational, between retaining the existing sidewalks and bike trails, but also expanding with new roads through the site. That was one of the goals of the Southdale Plan, is to provide options to France Avenue. Because right now, everyone has to go to France. That's the only option. So the goal is to incrementally build options on these, on some of these other sites. So the developer would grant us easements at no cost to use that space, both the roads, sidewalks, and all the plazas. The biggest benefit from a city perspective is the general public gets to enjoy the space, and it's the developer's responsibility to pave it, to sweep it, to shovel it, and keep the grass looking green. So, that's a nice outcome there. We've also structured the agreements that if the city does choose to move forward with this pedestrian crossing, there's additional rights that the developer would grant to the city to build and operate an underpass, or potentially an overpass, if we choose that route, in the center of the site. And we've also structured the deal, the reimbursement to the developer, so that 25% of all the future increments doesn't go to the developer, but it stays with the city to fund these public improvements. So that runs true in each of the agreements. Affordable housing has been part of this conversation from day one, and 10% of the units, whether they're the rental apartments, or whether they're the for-sale co-ops, would be priced and sold to families and households at that designated income level. And then also, public parking is one other big benefit. Each of the buildings would have the first floor available for public parking. It would be signed appropriately. The general idea is that, again, if we can allow and create an opportunity for someone to park once, and go to the restaurant, and go to the park, or go to the grocery store and go to the restaurant, without having to jump back on France Avenue and clog up the street. So, the city would be able to have that public parking easement at no cost, while the maintenance responsibility rests with the developer. As an HRA, you also asked us to look at other options. Why do we have to use TIF? What other options are out there? So, on three separate occasions, we looked at different levels of specificity, as far as what some of those real options are. Each time we've looked at it, the outcome is generally the same, and that is, in the do-nothing scenario, there's a little bit of tax base growth, just with inflation. In other scenarios, more limited in scale, commercial generally, we can almost double the tax base. We also looked at a scenario a few weeks ago, where the developer gave us renderings of a potential alternative. The challenge with that alternative is that they would need a waiver from our housing policy, from our sustainability policy, from our Southdale goals. And while they could make the numbers work without TIF, we would have to pull back from all of the policies that we typically employ on projects. So the conclusion comes out to be the same, that with this proposal, just the level of tax base growth is just dramatically different and dramatically higher than other, even theoretical options out there. This chart, it would show the same thing that the other one did. The red line on the bottom just shows the existing condition, just growth over time. The orange line, kind of in the middle and towards the top, that's that hypothetical alternative, where there's no TIF necessary, but we'd have to give waivers on our policies. But even if we would do that, it's still eclipsed, in the long term, by a project that delivers all of our policies with TIF. In the long term, it's still a better financial output or outcome for the community. We also looked at how those tax dollars are distributed. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but the general comment, or the general summary of this slide is, currently, 50% of the taxes generated from that property go to the state and to the fiscal disparities pool, leaving only half to the city, the schools, and the county. With this type of transformational development with TIF, when the project is finished, 75% of those taxes stay local, to benefit the school, the county, and the city. And once that proportion change, it's always in our benefit. So this slide summarizes the cost of those public benefits. I mentioned there's a financing gap of just under $23 million. We did a rough estimate of the costs of those public improvements, and we were conservative, they're probably a little bit higher than this. But we find that at least $29 million is the cost for the developer to satisfy our public benefit requirement. Since their gap is only 22.8, that's all we're offering. The rest is just their cost of doing business. So we really try to do the most and get the best outcomes that the developer can bear and still build the project, but also the best outcomes for the community. Each of the contracts in your packet is structured basically the same way. It identifies the goals and responsibilities, or the responsibilities and the roles of the developers, the cities, and the HRA. So with the developer, ADINA's TIF policy is really to keep that financial risk in the developer's court. That's their role, that's what they're good at. So the cost to buy the land, to secure the financing, to get the contractors on board, that all rests with the developer. The city's responsibility is to provide reimbursement of those eligible costs when they're finished, after they've delivered those public benefits. So we're anticipating three different TIF notes, one for each of the phases. Altogether, those TIF notes would add up to the $22.87 million amount. I mentioned that the TIF note, we talked about interest a few minutes ago, the TIF note dollar amounts here are the principal value. Always remember that the banks charge interest, and we have to charge, we're charging interest as well. So those TIF notes are interest-bearing. So over time, you know, we'll pay the principal plus the interest on those notes. I just want to be upfront about that. For this proposal, we're also recommending that the city consider the use of Spark on this project. The Spark program was created in 2021, and as you will recall, there was special legislation during the pandemic, where the state gave every city a little bit more flexibility than they normally do. But that flexibility expires next year, December of 2025. So the city has about $5 million in that Spark fund, and we're at the situation where it's going to, soon it's going to be a use it or lose it. I would strongly recommend that we use those dollars here in ADINA, rather than giving them back to the county or back to the state. So at the city's discretion, we've structured these agreements so that we can provide Spark early on in the project, when they're under construction. We know they're moving forward, they've got shovels in the ground, they're fully financed. And then any dollar amount provided through Spark would be reduced from that TIF amount. Again, based on some of your comments and directions, we wanted to reduce our reliance on TIF to the greatest extent that we could, and that Spark program is a good opportunity to do that. And then the last point I wanted to make is the lookback and the clawback. So, there's always concern about whether or not the TIF amount provided, was it just enough? Was it not enough? Hope it's not, it should not be enough. But is it too much? That's a concern. Did we use TIF to overly enrich the developer, to make the project a grand slam home run, they walk away, the best deal they've ever done? That's not what TIF is for. So all of our contracts include lookback conditions, where the city has rights to look at their financials upon a sale or at other points in the future, to make sure that they didn't use TIF to overly enrich themselves. If we find out they did have that grand slam home run project, good for them. That's the real estate industry in America. But at that point, we stop making TIF payments, and we can claw some of our money back if we actually did provide too much. So we always include those safeguards. That's something that our advisors strongly recommend. It's something we've done in ADINA for decades, and we're going to do it again here. So in conclusion, that is an overview of the TIF district plan and the three redevelopment agreements that are in your packet. I'm happy to stand for any questions, and as I mentioned, our whole team is here for any questions as well.
Yes, thank you, Manager Nuenendorf. You know, I'm thinking that when we had the presentation last week at the HRA meeting, Member Pierce wasn't able to be with us because he wasn't feeling well, and Member Russer was... was representing our council at the National League of Cities meeting. And so three of us were there and heard essentially the same presentation and voted favorably in, relative to the project. But I wanted to think about those two folks, our colleagues that couldn't be with us last week for various reasons, that they might want to ask you some questions or ask our public finance people, our attorneys, some questions before the rest of us start to ask questions that may have popped up since the meeting last week. So I could either turn to Member Pierce or Member Russer. Member Russer, go ahead.
Thank you, and I did watch that meeting late at night. And one of the questions, I did email you about this, because we did approve using Spark funds for the 7200 project. And I was really rather taken aback by the Spark plan. Well, we launched that. It still needs to go through a process, it has to be approved. But the idea was that the amount of affordable housing would drop from 10% to 8%. And if you could talk a little bit about that, and I, I think what kind of rattled me is the ordinance that was created, the PUD specified 10%. The TIF agreement specified 10%. And now we have a Spark grant being launched that is going to bring the amount of affordable housing down to 8%. And is that, is that something that could happen on this site? And does that mean we got to go back to the drawing board and we have to have more public hearings and do another ordinance amendment? That did not make sense to me.
Sure, happy to respond to that. So there, there's two questions there regarding the 7200 project, not part of our conversation tonight, but happy to respond to that. My colleague, Ms. Hawkinson, worked on that deal. And I think the key difference in that project was a slightly reduced percentage in exchange for permanent affordability. Our typical policy is 20 years. For TIF, we try to push it to 30, but at some point in year 21 or year 31, we're going to lose those units. And so the goal is to get permanent, and I think that was the exchange in the 7200 project.
Am I incorrect in thinking that the ordinance language requires 10% for that property? The PUD?
I, I honestly don't know. I didn't work on that one, and that wasn't what I prepared for tonight. I wonder if we should, I don't know if, if our city attorney remembers that.
It's under the impression that the PUDs required affordable housing to be created and that it required 10%.
I, I can't comment on that. I don't know if Mr. Lewis can, but I, you know, I think, I don't see the relevance of that conversation unless you, I mean, your question about, could something like this happen here in this particular situation? I don't think that's what staff is proposing, but I'm not going to speak for Manager Nuenorf. He can answer that question himself, because he did say there were two questions posited, so.
Right, right. I think that's the one that I can respond to with certainty. So for this deal in front of you tonight, the 7235 project, the contracts are written to follow the PUD site plan approval, where there's a binding commitment for 10% of the units for a period of 30 years. So for this site, that's, that's where we are today. Could things be amended in the future? I suppose theoretically, anything could be changed. You'd have to go through the process again, and there's a lot of, lot of process for that. But right, right now, the contracts in front of you are 10% of the rental apartments plus 10% of the ownership condos for a full term of 30 years each.
Thank you. If we could go to slide number 17, that shows the proposed underpass. And I, we did get an email today asking if there was any way the additional TIF funds, the 25%, or this project could be taken out of the TIF agreement. I, I want to get on record that I do have a lot of concerns about the process in which this developed. And, you know, I, I tried to figure out how we got to this point so quickly. And we were introduced to this idea of having a crossing at this specific point, I believe it was first in a working group, and it was presented to us as, look at, look at these three possibilities, you know, a mall under the ground, or, you know, a passageway that looks kind of like this, and I can't remember what the other one was. But we never had the conversation of, should this be in this location? And I know that, yes, this is mentioned as a possibility in the huge study that was done back in 2005, but I feel like we kind of did an end run around the public process, and that, that really has me very concerned. I feel like, and, and this is not the first time something like this has happened, like an idea that is really pretty, fully formed, is presented as, you know, an option. This happened with the land behind the fire station number two. You know, which design would you like for affordable housing? And we didn't talk about, you know, what are the ramifications of creating a section of land that has no road access? And so, you know, when I look at this, I kind of think, I really wish I had understood how this was unfolding, and I feel like I, I didn't have enough information, especially at that February meeting where we awarded an $80,000 contract to do a feasibility study to LHB. And I don't think we really got a feasibility study, and at that point, I did not know that LHB was also going to be, I didn't know that there was going to be TIF financing. I didn't know that LHB was going to be evaluating the Macy's site and being the entity that determined that it was TIF eligible. And for me, this raises a lot of concern. And I, I don't know, I mean, do, do we as a body need to be concerned about conflict of interest?
There's, there's, there's a lot there.
I don't know what that, I don't know what that last comment meant in the context of the question that I thought was asked, was, you know, for you to comment about the process involved in this potential aspect of a TIF plan that might potentially include an underground passageway, which is part of the agenda tonight, where we're going to talk about whether or not we should approve a motion calling for additional study and pursuit of financing for France Avenue pedestrian crossing. So it's far from anywhere. And we've had, you know, some deliberate sort of discussion about it, but to the extent you can answer the question that Member Russer is raising, please do.
Sure, sure. And you're not the first to, to ask that question. So when I, when we met with Planning Commission in September or October, they had a similar question about, about the underpass. And so at their, one of their suggestions was to not reference or include the renderings of the underpass in the TIF plan. I had initially put those in there to be helpful, to provide more information about the general direction this is going, but they raised, asked a similar question, raised a similar concern. So in the TIF plan that's in your packet, you'll notice that the renderings on the screen here are no longer in that plan. Instead, there's a vague reference to potential future public infrastructure, which could be an underpass, an overpass, a sidewalk, a pipe, any different types of things. But how we got to this point, you had mentioned in 2005, there was a study, and then in 2007, there was a study. So it's been talked about a lot and kind of put on the back shelf. With this project moving forward, as well as a project on the other side of the street moving forward, it presented a unique, a unique opportunity to dust off those old plans from the shelf and see if there was still an opportunity to move forward. So about a year ago, in November of 2023, we presented an update to the HRA at the time, looking at different options, overpass, bridges, underpasses, lots of different things. And the general consensus, and I don't think everyone agreed on it, was that the underpass was the preferred direction. And in February of this year, we started looking into that a little bit more deeply, which yielded us the renderings that we're sharing here today.
Okay, and that's, that's not really what my question was. It was more, we, we ended up at a specific site, and that makes me uncomfortable. But I will move on to questions that have more to do with, you know. The, the whole thing was about the BUT4 test. You opened saying that this is all about the BUT4 test, and BUT4, TIF, this specific plan is not going to move forward. When I look at the BUT4 test slide that the state auditor provides, it says, "The BUT4 test may not be so black and white." Pass, definitely, if no development without TIF. Okay? And I, I don't think we can say that that's the case. Pass with a question, modest undesirable development would occur much later. Pass slash fail, modest development would occur later. And I, I think we did see a slide that showed that development would occur later. Fail pass, like maybe it's okay, decent development would happen fairly soon. Fail, nearly comparable development would happen soon. Fail proposed development would surely occur without TIF. So there's a range. It's gray. It's not just a black and white BUT4 test, and that's something I'm really wrestling with. When we look at just the overall development and the type of structures that we're getting and what they're for, the vast majority is market rate apartment. And we've had, this would be the third TIF district, although I, I understand the first TIF district has timed out. But that two was primarily luxury and Class A office space. The second TIF district, Class A office space and primarily market rate apartment. Now we have a third that is, you know, the, the vast majority, again, is market rate and Class A office. And I feel like there isn't enough, you know, I'm trying to come up with an analogy, and I keep thinking about, you know, putting up too many casinos in one spot, and then they all compete against each other and it doesn't work out. But, you know, I think we really need to consider what we're doing and how much TIF we're putting on a form of residential housing that we've already surpassed what we were supposed to create according to the Met Council goals for market rate. We're beyond that. So why are we putting so much money into this? And then office space, it's 2024. I know the high-end office rates, I believe the vacancy rate is lower, like 19% low, is what it's at. So it's lower than other offices. But again, you know, I, I just kind of, I am very much wrestling with whether this is a TIF-worthy project. So those are, those are my concerns. I guess that's not so much of a question. But thank you. We can go to James.
Yeah, thank you.
Member Pierce, sorry.
Thank you.
The illness lingers on.
So I just have, I have a couple of comments and maybe. Couple of comments and maybe two questions. The first question on the, the 22.8, the TIF note, which is on your slide 36. Can you describe the 11 million for affordable housing? Can you talk about, just in practicality, what that is?
Sure. So slide 36, I put it back on the screen. So this is a summary for each of the individual lots and then the total. It's a summary of the estimated cost of that public benefit. So 11, 11, just a nose over 11 million for affordable housing. That's two things added together. That's the foregone sales revenue from the five affordable condos. The developer is foregoing nearly $2 million in sales revenue. Had those been sold at market rates, he would have realized $2 million in revenue off the top. And then for the rental apartments, a similar calculation. It's the delta between renting the unit at market rate for 30 years or rentering, renting the same unit at an affordable rate for 30 years, and then the present value of that cash flow, that, that delta between affordable and market. And that, when you add those together, it comes to $11 million.
So that's half of the anticipated TIF note amount. And so I don't know if this is a question for you or for the developer. If that were not included in the TIF note, so the 11 million comes out, and then our TIF note is 11 million instead of 22, how does that impact the project?
I'll give a best guess, but I would love to hear from the developer directly. I mean, it should boost their financial returns, which will lower the TIF amount that they need.
Wait, let, let me restate that, because, let me restate that. So, yeah, so let me restate that. If, so the way this is structured today, the affordable housing expires in 30 years. And so what, what would be the difference if the developer, I'm assuming would still pay the 11 million, but they could still, they wouldn't have to provide affordable housing in these units? And so the city would get the 11 million. I'm assuming the city would still get the 11 million. And then we could then use that 11 million for other projects in the city to do owner occupied. Is that, could you do that?
Let me think about that.
So I'm really asking the, as an example of the structure of how the 11 million actually operates.
Sure, there's, so I'll, I'll give you the tag team.
Got an attorney sneaking up to the front there.
It's not a simple yes or no. So if the developer extracted the affordable units from this project, in our TIF financing plan, we still have a line item for affordable housing. So theoretically, the city could capture those dollars and direct them somewhere else. That's theoretically possible. I don't know if it's the same dollar amount. At some point, there's a limit as far as what you can pull out of this district. But I think it's theoretically possible. Are there any practical challenges that I don't know about?
That must have been pretty good. You got your attorney's, oh, he stood up. Okay, here we go.
Mayor, council members, Jade Lindgren from Dorsey and Whitney. I just wanted to add that you couldn't transfer all of that 11 million out of this tax increment district unless you created a affordable housing TIF district, which is at 30% AMI. So a very dedicated affordable, then you could transfer that 11 to create a housing. Otherwise, there are a set of what are called pooling restrictions that say you have to use the tax increment within the tax increment district.
District, okay, okay. Thank you. That, that was the, the question. And I, you know, where I'm going there, and we've talked about this before, trying to find a way that we can have permanent affordable housing, we can really lean into owner occupied. And one of the biggest challenges for cities is funding. And because this is one of the ways we do it, we essentially end up with the affordable housing that the developer is offering us. And it's not, it's not permanent. And so I've continued to try to think of creative ways where we can actually extract those funds and find a way that we can leverage those for 100% sustainable affordable housing. And then as a city, we get to dictate, well, what type of affordable housing we would like versus being, versus being tied to the affordable housing that the developer is offering. Okay, so that was.
I have a partial response, if that's helpful.
Yeah.
So I don't think this gets you all the way as where you want to go. But in each of these agreements for the rental units, we did include Exhibit N, as in Nancy, which is a right of first option. So what that means is, at some point in time, if the developer chooses to convert the rental apartments to condominium, the city has the first right to purchase those affordable units. And if, whether that's 10 years in the future, 20 years, 30 years in the future, whenever that is, the city is first in line to buy those units. If we choose, if we choose to buy it in the future, we could then make it permanently affordable, or come up with that whatever the right recipe was in, in 20 or 30 years. So it, we try to include as much flexibility, but again, I can't predict exactly what's gonna, what the world's gonna look like in 30 years.
And I do just want to acknowledge that the developer is offering five condos that would be affordable owner occupied. So I didn't mean to mistake that, to, I didn't mean to assinuate that there was nothing included. included. But my point is, you know, continuing to try to figure out a way that we could create a sustainable fund with some sizable dollars in it that we can then really start to push the envelope on our affordable housing objectives. So that's one. The, the second question was really about the over or underpass. In the document, there's 25% of the 22 million that I think is being earmarked for other projects. And yeah, there you go. Such as the pedestrian crossing. And this is just another more of a process question. If we are asking later in the agenda, the next agenda item, should we pursue more study there? Can you just describe why we would then earmark funding for the underpass as a part of this agreement versus once we're more sure what that project is gonna look like? I just wanna understand that.
Sure, sure. So in this agreement, we don't specifically earmark it for any particular project, but we do put our foot in the door and reserve 25% of the future incremental taxes for a public infrastructure improvement or for pooling. So we wanna be careful because the, that underpass, it's not well enough to find at this moment in time. So we provided as much flexibility as we could to give the city the, the runway that we need to decide what is the right project. So just because we reserve 25%, we still have flexibility as far as how those funds are used.
So those, so the, it'd be more accurate to say we're gonna pool 25% of those funds to be used for projects in that area. But, but I think.
That's, that's another option too.
Yeah, however we've worded it, I think people are assuming that those funds are for the pedestrian crossing. I mean, we even reference it in several documents. And so that's why I was asking that question because it, it, what you said would make sense to me if we're not sure what we're gonna do there. We really shouldn't be earmarking funds for it. And your attorney's coming back up to the.
I think we're on the same page. Go ahead.
Well, it strikes me that there's some timing issues involved here and as to when you do it. If we were to approve these agreements, we better have something about this in an agreement now.
Right, Mayor. And I didn't just walk up, I nodded at the mayor to let him know I wanted. But I wanted to make a comment, Councilmember Pierce, about pooling again. Because since this is a redevelopment agreement or district, what the state law allows us to do is to pool 25% out to use for another purpose. When I mentioned before, there was a cap, like in your 11 million scenario, it could go 100% if it was for very affordable housing. So first of all, a 75 25 is kind of a normal cap. And we designed a program here that could fill the gap in this project just using 75. So you have your maximum ability to pool into somewhere else. Okay? So you could use it for an underpass even if it was in another location.
Oh, got it. Okay, okay.
And we talked about this at the HRE meeting, this very issue. And the question came up, the one that you just asked with your prior question is, if we decided we weren't gonna go forward with that passageway, could this 25% be used to establish, be pooled and be used for affordable housing?
Yes.
I think your answer was yes.
Yes.
So we're, we're theoretically smart to capture part of the, 25% of the 100% of the TIF for ourselves in case we see a purpose for it.
That was, that was the strategy.
Oh, thank you. Are there other, are there current examples? Like I'm thinking maybe perhaps we used pooling when we did pedestrian road construction around, we had funding from Mason Green to do some of the street enhancements here. I don't know if that was pooling or not, but if you can give a couple of examples of pooling, that'd be great.
Sure, sure. So the, the definition of pooling technically is taking the monies outside of the geographic boundaries. In the Mason Green, we, the boundaries are broad enough where we didn't actually have to pool it out. But theoretically, it's the same thing. So the, the tax revenue generated from the new Mason Green apartments is sufficient to reimburse them for their costs to get that project moving, plus about six or seven million dollars in public improvements. So that was all the construction work this summer. That was the roundabouts and the Grange Avenue and 50th Street being rebuilt. Rather than going to the general fund and the general levy, those expenses are gonna be borne from that TIF district. We've done similar things at 50th and France where we use some monies from Centennial Lakes to build that north ramp. There were some TIF dollars available in that district. So we pooled them out of the district into that ramp instead of issuing debt for that. We had cash, so we used cash. And then when I first started here, our finance director at the time mentioned that we did the same thing, but the opposite direction in the 1980s. We pooled money from 50th and France in the 1980s down into Centennial Lakes to make some improvements down there a long time ago. So it's, it's a common technique. We've used it a lot in Edina. And it's a good opportunity here as well.
Thank you for that. And then the other, the two comments or maybe one comment, I do appreciate staff taking my questions and the slide where you have the options, right? Providing that content. And then I also, I spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Brahma talking about other options versus the use of TIF. And so I just wanna acknowledge that I do appreciate that work and that level of engagement from staff as well as Mr. Brahma. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's start a conversation. Member Jackson, would you like to lead us off?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the slides that we looked at, there were some alternative scenarios. I just wanna sort of ground the discussion here. Those were fictitious alternatives. What we have before us is a very specific development. Nobody else has come forward and Mr. Brahma didn't have to beat out three different companies to say, to get his come forward. He approached Macy's, came up with the idea, looked at our policies and developed this development based on what we had made publicly available. So these others are fictitious for purpose of argument. It was very enlightening to think about, but this is a very specific project. We saw several iterations of this development come forward. And each time we pushed the developer more to make this look like what we wanted it to look like. And that costs money. Over, I believe over 40% of this piece of land will have a public easement on it, which means full public use of that land. A big thing for me is the funding for Centennial Lakes. If we were going to have TIF without that, that meant that people would be moving into this area, provide, you know, more wear and tear on the park. We welcome them, but people create garbage and need to be cleaned up after. And so we're gonna get funding to cover the cost of that new population coming in. The list of public benefits is long, but for me, it's very important that, the discussion that we just had about that additional 25%. If this was just for the four corners of the development, I don't know how I would vote. But because it has the opportunity to create maybe the underpass, maybe a bridge, maybe it's pooling for affordable housing. But I think if we can get a safe pedestrian crossing here, this will be transformational for the whole region. So the Southdale Plan is transformational in its own way, but this goes beyond the four corners of the property. And that is very important to me in TIF going forward. And so I intend to support this.
Thank you. Yes, Member Agnew.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate all the dialogue and the conversation that we've had about this project. And I know, I think you mentioned five conversations that we've had about it. There's been, that's just for the funding part of it, right? There, there have been a lot more. And it's, it's not perfect. It's not 100% of what I would like to see in this area, but I don't know that I could pick out what perfect is either. And I think that I'm really excited to see transformation on this site. I do like the use of TIF for this purpose. And I do really appreciate that we've been able to find a way to pool potential resources to invest in other ways that we wanna amplify the impact that this development, the development across the street is gonna have on this area. And so I do also appreciate staff from, for one, front loading the conversation on, could there be a pedestrian underpass? And I know that that's later in the agenda and we still have a lot to figure out there. But the reason that it came up now is because it is a once in a lifetime opportunity or once in a generational opportunity, I should probably say, where we have such major development on both sides of, of France, of this area. And so I know it's not necessarily the most ideal order, but I don't know how we could get an ideal order of operations on this either. And so I think that staff has really found a way to not say, here's 25% in order to do this underpass. Yes, it was referenced as a potential example, but really we're saying, here's 25% that we can use towards whatever this body and based off of input from individuals, residents, commission members, whoever else, how we decide to infuse that investment, that continued investment into Edina. So I just appreciate the work that went into that and answering all of the questions because I do recognize that this isn't the easiest three project potential to weave together. But overall, I like the way that this is coming together. So thank you.
Thank you. Member Pierce? I'll go to Member Rusher.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, on the 25%, I, I think we're kidding ourselves if we're pretending that we're not, at, at least set the frame that we're gonna use some of that money for a potential pedestrian pass. And I don't know how we set that frame, when it was set, but we, but we have set that. And so I think we just have to, we're kidding ourselves if we wanna pretend that, well, we're gonna use that for just general pooling. I said that is what you probably meant in the beginning. But we have continued to say pedestrian pass. And I mentioned it that way because I, I think the process and what we communicate and how we communicate it, like it really matters. And so I, I just think we have to, I don't know how to resolve that, but I think we gotta do, we have to improve on how we communicate intent. And you know, the other side of the coin, if we had just said, we're gonna pool 25% for other projects, maybe somebody would still assume we want that for the pedestrian pass. Or I think one resident actually talked about the lid again, like that lid never dies. And that was never even a project that was up for approval. And so these things kinda have a, a life of their own. And so I think words and how we say things definitely matter. And it's, it'd be good for us to lean into that. The, I also believe that, I understand the point that the options that we look at, the ones that were presented tonight, as well as the one that Mr. Brahma presented in a, another, in a prior meeting. And he actually said, we would never, you would never present this as a project because you're aware of all of the policies that we have as a city. And I, it's tough for me to, I shouldn't say it's, it's tough. I just don't like being in the position of, as a city council member, I have to operate with these blinders on. And so some of the questions that I ask actually have nothing to do with the approval of the project in front of me. There are questions that are being asked where I think we need perhaps a different direction or we need to look at our processes and refine those. This is one of those cases where we have policies in place. I talked about the example from affordable housing. I don't believe that that policy gets us the best affordable housing for Edina, but the policy exists. And so what I'm asked to do as a council member is apply that policy. I wasn't here when we developed that policy, but I'm still, right? As an elected official, it is still my responsibility to understand it and apply it. And so I get that, but it's also my responsibility to question and challenge and say there could be a different way or a better way of doing it. And so the broad question, the broad comment that I made earlier, not tonight, but in a previous meeting, I wonder if a lot of our policies, guidelines are increasing the expense of a lot of projects. And I question whether or not with all of them, are we getting the, the value out of them that, that was originally intended? And I think it would be smart for us to lean into that and as a city try to understand, maybe Councilmember Pierce is wrong. Maybe we get all the value out of those we want and then some. And I'd be totally fine with that. But as I sit back and I look at some of this, I question whether or not we are getting all of the value out of some of the policies and guidelines that we have. I already mentioned earlier that I do appreciate the effort that has gone into, at least going down this path and, and providing some information for us that I don't know that we would have had without asking the question of, well, what would you do if you got little to note TIF, right? I think that one question kicked off additional analysis. We saw additional content. And while I think many of my, my colleagues had a lot of those answers in their heads already from experience, it was good to be able to go through that in a public forum for the rest of the, the concerned or interested residents, for them to see it. Let me see. I do think that as, as been articulated, that there is value, public benefit in this project. We've talked about that countless times before tonight. So again, in previous meetings as well. And so I do appreciate the effort that you, Mr. Brahma, have gone through to adjust things based on feedback that you've gotten, whether it be from the council, from residents, or from the, the planning commission. Thank you.
Yes, Member Agnew.
I just wanna briefly react to some of the things that you said, Member Pierce. I forget the exact wording, so I'm not gonna quote you. But early on, you mentioned, you know, how we've talked both about the pooling and we're saying that these could be used for other things. And what I had heard was that this was potentially maybe disingenuous or maybe not what we were intending to do with these funds. So I don't know if you can just clarify, but I feel like we are saying, this is one option. And we're also saying, it hasn't been approved and we haven't agreed on it in any way. in any way, semblance, or form, and so it's also totally, in my perspective, a possibility that they could be used for many, many other things, including affordable housing, including other infrastructure projects. So I don't know if you could react to that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, thanks for asking the question. And so I would say, full stop, I don't believe that we are wording things to be disingenuous as a city. I definitely don't believe that, and so I want, want to make sure everybody hears me say that. That is not what I meant at all. But, that being said, I think the way that we communicate some of these things, it's 100% that there are members in the community who may think that we're being disingenuous. And I can give a specific example. We were at a campaign event, one of the, with community members, and this would have been one of the neighborhood meetings, and I remember the first time I heard someone say, we're earmarking funds for the pedestrian underpass. And I had a reaction to that, thinking to myself, well, we're not, we're not doing that. And so afterwards, I asked that person, where are you getting that from? And they send me back a slide that looks very similar to the one we had tonight, that says, 25% for other projects, or, or could include, right, a pedestrian pass. And so I definitely don't think that we are hiding information, or trying to be, certainly not disingenuous in any way. And so I think that that requires us to be really specific and clear in the way we communicate, so that it's not misinterpreted in any way.
Member Rusher.
Thank you. And to that point, I mean, it is very clear in the text, if you look at page 29, Article 9, the definition of public crossing notes that it is to connect the two properties, and so that site, it is there, it is in the TIF agreement. I, there are several things that I am concerned about and make it difficult for me to support this TIF zone, and I've mentioned some of them before, but I'm fascinated and also kind of horrified by the practice of tiffing PUDs, and the reason for that is, during the PUD process, there's the give-to-get, and it's not turning out that the classic result of a PUD, where you get more pervious surface, more green space, that generally doesn't happen. We're getting a lot of impervious surface. Yes, it'll be open to the public, but there's that. And then, you know, we saw how, well, without TIF, you're not going to get the affordable housing, but that was supposed to be part of the PUD agreement. You're not going to get the sustainability, but again, that was supposed to be part of the PUD agreement. And so I kind of feel like it's not really a give-to-get, it's a, it's a give-to-get, but we'll pay you for what you're giving us, and that really bothers me a lot. When I think about this particular project, I feel like there's, you know, yes, the developer went to Macy's and, you know, launched this project, and all of this, Macy's itself, you know, is a viable commercial enterprise right now, and, you know, yes, I could see the argument that this is only, this is the only thing that they will be open to, and we're not going to get any other kind of development, and you could say it's just all fictional, but at the same time, what we're getting is primarily construction that we don't necessarily need, okay? And so I can't, I can't get past that reality. And so that, that is really a problem for me right now. The other thing, you know, we talked about police hours, what would be generated, it wouldn't be enough to justify hiring a new person, it would be 100 hours, and I think, you know what I would like to see is a bar graph that shows every single TIF project, where we are going to need more commitment from the fire department, from the police, so that we get a running total of how many hours we are getting. You know, we have so many TIF-financed projects that have housing in them, and so, you know, what, what is the tipping point where we have, you know, reached the point where we do need to hire more staff? Because there really is that direct relationship, and so I think that is really very important. The other concern I have about TIF and public infrastructure, there is no, you know, we talk about, oh, down the road, we're going to get input from the public. Really, when? There's not going to be a public hearing if we decide to build the underpass, there's no need, it's TIF money. There was no need to have a public hearing for the pedestrian bridge across the train tracks, and there's now a DOJ inquiry. I think the public feedback is important, you know, how is that going to work in this scenario? When you have TIF money, you don't have public engagement necessarily. So for all of those reasons, I cannot support this third TIF district. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rusher. So Member Rusher raised an issue in her prior comments about the Buckford test not being black and white, and I think Manager Nundorf was concurring, you know, that, but I think we've learned that with this particular project, the project that we approved, the site plan that we approved, this project, as approved, would not proceed but for TIF. And the reason it is approved in the form it was approved in is because of the fact that we, as a city, demanded certain things out of that site, that we thought that, to the issue of whether there's a sufficient public benefit delivered, I think Slide 20 has many of your public benefit elements to it, you know, that include the $3 million park dedication fee, the $3 million in park maintenance obligation, $80,000 a year for 30 years, there's a development impact fee, I think, of $10 million, and then the list goes on and on. So... They can do a project, they could do a project that doesn't have us as a partner, but in the circumstances where we want to be a partner, and we want to see the project elevated to the standards that we demand, then we've got to be prepared to step up as a partner. Now, it used to be, when we first passed that affordable housing policy, that we could demand that affordable units be in there for a certain period of time on the developer's nickel, but we've learned that that's not possible anymore, our affordable housing manager has told us as much. We're not going to get affordable housing units unless we are a partner in these projects that come along, and when they, a new project comes along that has this kind of capacity from a multifamily standpoint, and we have a number of units in there that we have the opportunity to have in there, we have said, we should be saying, we're prepared to step up as a partner and help make that possible with that affordable housing element of it. So, for me, we passed the Buckford test, where there's a sufficient public benefit delivered, I mean, there's, we're, you know, we're making number, we're carving up pursuant to the design experience guidelines, we're carving up an 80-acre parcel into four parcels, getting interior streets that they're responsible for, as Member Jackson says, the public gets to use 43% of it, I think, the project, overall project, has public usements involved. With respect to the potential for some way to connect these two properties across the street from each other, I think you've gone about that in a very deliberate way, and I like the notion that our team, our lawyers, our public finance people, and you as our economic development manager, have said, we're going to, we're going to recommend that you approve this from a TIF usage standpoint, and here's the elements that we're going to approve, it's not going to be more than 10% of the total value of the project, we only use it about 10% of the time in all projects, but here's what we think you should be thinking about, you should be thinking about using it in this way and for these purposes. And for me, those were persuasive, because we can have regular, nice projects, or we can have elevated, beautiful projects that have a huge amount of potential with respect to being able to connect these properties across the street from each other. Now, that, the jury's still out on that, we're still analyzing that, but we've got to go step by step. And then to the point that Member Agnew was raising about, the, I think, the smart way that you, as our advisors, went about recommending that 25% of the TIF get reserved and is coming back to us for some particular purpose, is really an important element of this, because there are other ways to fund this. If we, if we thought, we know it's feasible now, we've got the engineering report, we don't know if it's practical or worth the expense, we got to analyze that yet, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. But we have, we have the ability to go to, like, the bipartisan infrastructure law and apply, because of all the elements that I've seen in the bipartisan infrastructure law, in the IIJA, to apply for total funding of that project, because of the elements that it includes, including being able to get kids from affordable housing projects east of York to school in a safe way. I mean, there's all kinds of elements here that we could, where we could receive a grant, possibilities where we could receive a grant. So we could take that 25% and use it for some other particular purpose that we think is important to do from a pooling standpoint, and maybe it's affordable housing, that $5 or $6 million that we would aggregate there. So, when I think about what we can have, or what we could have if we were a good partner, and did this the way we do it in Edina, and we get to have housing, and we get to have a cash flow to help us maintain Centennial Lake Park, all these other elements, public parking, public parking at grade, I think, public parking underground, 140-some units of public parking, there's so many good things about this to tell me that our advisors led us in a good direction, and I'm prepared to support both the establishment of the TIF district to go to the next step, and also to support the execution of these agreements, to go to, you know, the next step on these agreements. So... You want, you've got two separate motions here. One is to approve Resolution 2024, which should establish the 72nd France Number 3 Taxing, Government Financing District. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Moved, second.
Member Agnew moves, Member Jackson seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-78, which would establish the 72nd France Number 3 Taxing, Government Financing District. Further discussion on that particular resolution? All those in favor of adoption of that Resolution 2024-78, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention?
Abstention.
Motion carries. Resolution 2024-78 is adopted. The next motion is to approve the TIF redevelopment agreements with Enclave Companies, DBA Enclave Edina LLC, and Lifestyle Communities LLC, and authorize city staff to implement the terms of the agreements, you know, the terms of the agreements, those three agreements. Is there a motion of that effect?
Moved, second.
Member, Member Jackson moves, Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the TIF redevelopment agreements with Enclave Companies, DBA Enclave Edina LLC, and Lifestyle Communities LLC, and authorize staff to implement the terms of the agreements. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I do, we received two potential redevelopment agreement, I guess what we call these amendments or additions, and this was in direct response to the request that I had had for the site, the conversation that we had had last time about, how can we ensure that there's something that's a community draw onto this location? And so staff developed two additions to add to these agreements, and so I would like to make an amendment that we include these in there.
Are we going about this in the proper procedural manner? That a motion is second on the adoption of the agreements as they've been crafted, but we haven't talked about these potential additions to Article 15 and Exhibit D.
Under discussion, happy to provide a little bit more information about that. I think you could modify the motion to include an amendment, if there's first and second
I suppose we could do it two ways. I suppose we could, we could proceed on what we've got in front of us, and then make a motion to amend, or we could, we could have the maker and the seconder back off and recraft the motion.
Who made the motion? Was it Kate, or was it Carolyn?
Looking at the attorney here, too.
Well, Mayor, I would interpret Member Agnew's comment as an amendment to the motion to add these additional provisions.
All right, so what we would do then procedurally is that we would vote on the amendments first, and then we would go back and vote on the main motion. Know what you were getting at?
What I was getting at is whoever was the person that made the motion could accept the amendment, but I couldn't remember which one of you made it.
Procedurally, well, we don't, we don't have, you know, yeah, so we're partway through the process, I think the proper process would be to vote on the amendments, and then go back and vote on the main agreement. At least, that's what we've done at the tab, somebody makes an amendment before we vote on the main motion.
Is it possible to have, just have a discussion without moving the amendment? Because we've got a motion on the floor to approve the agreement.
Yeah, we don't have a second.
Well, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the agreement, and now we're at discussion. Could we discuss the amendment, potential amendment, first, and then make the motion or not? Because I don't, I don't, honestly, I don't really understand this, I just saw it this evening, and I am uncomfortable with legal language that I haven't, you know, gone through.
So what I was going to say was that Member Agnew has moved the adoption of these items as an amendment, but we don't have a second.
Correct.
So it could fail for the lack of a second, if you wanted to think about not addressing this right now. Now, Mr. Nundorf, why don't you step up here? What would be the consequences of, I mean, we saw this for the first time in our, on the dais this evening, I think, Member Agnew may have had time to study it through, but I haven't. Maybe you want to explain it?
Sure.
And maybe we, maybe we could come back and amend the agreements at our next meeting, or maybe we can deal with it yet tonight, I'm just not sure.
I think you can deal with it tonight, it's a very simple amendment.
One that you support?
Happy to explain it, I'm sorry?
Is it one that you support?
Yes.
All right, well, then, go ahead and explain it.
Sure thing. So at last week's HRA meeting, Commissioner Agnew asked for us a little bit more clarity and certainty that the developer would make best efforts to come up with a tenant mix that created a real destination on the site, that attracted people in the community to it. We had a discussion at the HRA about what that meant, and then some follow-up conversation as well. While it's too early in the process to name specific tenants at this point in time, we do recommend and support putting these amendments into the legal agreements. This language has been crafted by myself, by Mr. Lindgren, and by the developers, and their attorneys, we've, a lot of time has gone into the wordsmithing of these few sentences, but essentially, we're recommending that a provision be added to each of the agreements, to the northwest, the southwest, and the east, that would focus on commercial leasing. So it's section 15.11, and essentially, it just sets the bar for the developer to find a robust tenant mix that is commercially successful, but also that provides that kind of community destination, that type of entertainment type of option. So I think one of the things, you know, that we would be dissatisfied with were, would be a whole bunch of tenants that were nail salons and sandwich shops. It's not really, it's a great little retail strip, but that's not the kind of destination that I think this body had in mind last week. And so the language in section 15.11 sets the goal as far, as far as what we, what we can agree to look for, without getting specific, right? We don't want to name this restaurant, or this comedy club, or that activity space. And then the second sentence is adding an additional provision to the go-ahead letter. So when the developer gets full funding, they've purchased the land, they've got their debt, they've got their equity, they're ready to pull a permit and start construction, they're required to alert us as a financial participant. participant in this. We're recommending in that go-ahead letter, we also, at that point, have them disclose to us who's their marketing agent, let's see that marketing package, let's learn more about your marketing strategy, uh, because that, that's the most appropriate time. So that, that timeframe is probably a year in the future. Um, so the, the sentences are pretty simple. Uh, they're, they're, what you see is what you get. There's no hidden connections or anything. Um, in the packet, there are lots of renderings and letters from JLL, Jones Lang LaSalle, who's their, uh, expected to be their leasing agent, and then renderings of what some of the exterior spaces could look like when they're actually activated. Um, so that's an overview.
Yeah, that, that's helpful, very helpful. Um, maker of the motion, Jackson? Can approach this two ways, I think. We could, we could look for a second on the proposed amendment, but if you, if you withdraw the main motion and you withdrew your second, then we could just move to approve the agreements with the addition of these two items.
I will withdraw my motion.
Draw your second, and we'll remake the motion?
Yes.
So we're now going to move to approve the TIF redevelopment agreements with enclave companies, DBA Enclave, Edina LLC, and Lifestyle Communities LLC, with the addition of, uh, items 9.5, uh, number one, that section 15.11 of all three agreements, and then adding, uh, the following language that's embodied, uh, on, uh, Roman numeral nine of Exhibit D, uh, to those, oh, to all three of those agreements, um, and authorize staff to implement the terms of the agreements with the addition of the items that we just discussed.
So moved. Second.
Now, we got a motion by Member Agnew, second by Member Jackson, um, so the motion has stated, uh, further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the, uh, TIF redevelopment agreements, uh, as modified, as stated in the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention?
Abstention.
The matter carries. The motion to approve the TIF redevelopment agreements with the additions described, uh, with enclave companies, DBA Enclave, Edina LLC, and Lifestyle Communities LLC, uh, are approved, and staff is authorized to implement the terms of the agreements with the developer, all three agreements. So, thank you, everybody, for your, uh, your work on this matter. That was addressed particularly, you know, last week in the HRA meeting by Councilmember Agnew. So, thanks, everybody, for some really superior work here, and the developer as well. All right. Um, now, uh, Member Nundor, or Member Nundorf, Mr. Nundorf, Manager Nundorf, you have something else you want to talk to us about, and that is Resolution 2024-84, which potentially calls for additional study in pursuit of financing for France Avenue pedestrian crossing. Want to explain what you're after there?
Correct, sure. Uh, so this resolution simply acknowledges the feasibility report that we received in its final format last week, um, and directs staff to do a little bit more study, um, and to start looking at financing options. Um, so it's, it's, at this point, it's not a commitment to build anything at any particular place, at any particular time, but it's to start taking this feasibility study and going a little bit deeper. Um, uh, we think there, the, the initial look is fairly light, but at some point in the next six months or so, we'll probably have to hire, if we choose to go forward, we'll put together a proposal, um, to engage a new engineering firm or a engineering firm to study it more deeply. That would come back to you as the HRA for those investments. Um, but any action like that would be delayed until the developer actually acquires the land. Uh, we want to be careful that the city doesn't get over our skis on this, um, but once the developer acquires the site, it's obvious that they will be moving forward, and that's when, when we would expect to come back to you. Uh, but we do want to start applying for grants and looking into funding as soon as possible because that's low cost and high return for the community.
So the, you've got a significant number of wheresses in the resolution, which is typical, but the, the resolution at the end is that the city council, uh, supports the additional study in pursuit of potential funding for France Avenue, for a France Avenue pedestrian crossing, and authorizes staff to conduct additional studies so that the city can determine, uh, whether or not to proceed with the poss, with this possible project. And I take it when you mean the city, you mean the city council?
Correct.
Then, Member Agnew has a question for you or a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Manager Nundorf, for preparing this. I had, I had asked, um, I had spoken with Scott Neal about, how do we pursue this? How do we push this forward? And appreciate the work that staff put on, um, coming up with this. I think very specifically, as we continue the conversation about it, um, there are two direct asks that if this were to be passed, I would like to also make to, um, city staff, um, based off of conversation and dialogue that we've had here tonight. Um, one is I would love, um, for our MJ's title, Community Engagement Director, um, to prepare a community engagement process, um, and make that a part of this as well. How are we going to take feedback? What kind of community conversations are we going to have and structure it, um, to appease any concerns that, like, we're not going to engage community? Because I, I fully hope and know that we will for this. Um, and then I also think it would be valuable to have, even if it's a portion of a work session, a work session with, um, commission members, whether it maybe it's a joint session with the planning commission and the transportation commission, um, specifically to collect their ideas and, and discuss potential collaboration or input that they might have on the project. Um, so I want to hear everyone else's thoughts, but that's just a little bit more structure on kind of why we're seeing this tonight. I ask for this to be put together, um, and just additional components that I think will help, um, in driving the potential of this project forward.
You know, thanks for raising those two points, and, and I know I made a note when Member Rissler, uh, was concerned about whether there'd be, ever be a public hearing with respect to a potential underpass under France Avenue. And I made that note because I, I wanted to say, that's up to us. That's up to us. We, we, we could do what we want with that, and I think it's an intention to do that. Uh, go ahead, Member Rissler.
One thing, throughout this whole process, we have heard, um, that this is going to be similar to the York Avenue underpass. I went out and I measured that space, and the York Avenue underpass is 35 feet wide. However, in some places, uh, it's even wider than that because it has those cutouts for the benches. Uh, the dimensions that are given for the tunnel is 24 to 30 for width. That's very different than 35. And so I would respectfully ask that when we talk about that comparison, we have a clear overlay image that shows that the width for the proposed underpass is going to be significantly narrower. The other thing is the ceiling for that York pass is 12 feet high. Um, the language that we read from the report says it'll be a minimum of 10 feet for going all the way there. Um, there's this impression that it'll be a similar exposure to open light. Um, the reality is, if you measure, you know, the amount of space that's covered and the amount of space that's open, you've got 30.5% exposure to daylight between those two elements, that little slit that's only going to be eight feet wide, that's 3.5%. So it's a tenth of what the York Bridge is. And so if we're going to make that comparison, it needs to be fair, and we need to have a visual that instructs people very clearly that it's going to be a very different kind of space to go through. Um, so I, I ask that if we're going to continue with that comparison, you know, we've got to get some information there so that it's more accurate. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Member Jackson?
Um, yes, thank you. So, Member Agnew, you stole my thunder. I like, I like your idea actually better than what I was thinking, but I know in the past, when there have been proposals, they've, uh, presented to the different commissions, and so we might, um, you know, think about whether it's all the commissions, or, um, you know, who, but I think that that's a better forum for everybody to talk about it. We might still have a joint, you know, a work session with them, but I would like to see a presentation to the different commissions and get, uh, written feedback from them.
Yeah, thanks for that, too. Uh, Manager Nundorf, could you come back up here? You know, the, the resolution as proposed is, I'll say generally, let, let's keep studying this to see if it makes any sense. And so when you think about that, well, what, what does that mean? What do you, what do you envision as the next step? We've had a feasibility study from one engineering company that says, yeah, we think it's feasible, and, uh, and we think we have some rough ideas on costing, but it, it's, it's not nearly ready for community conversation yet. So what do you, what do you see us doing next?
Sure. Um, I don't have a full plan or a full plan, a strategy laid out at this point, but one of the first steps to do is to, um, internally, we would do a PPP plan, a public participation plan. That's what, um, uh, my colleague, M.G. Lehman typically does, to, to define those strategies and come up with realistic expectations of how can we engage the public? What does the public mean? Is that the citizens? Is that the businesses? Is it the commissions? Is it all of those people? Um, and then how do we best engage them to come up with a meaningful, um, uh, type of input? So, coming up with that plan. The second thing I think we really need is to engage a designer that can illustrate more clearly what this is. Um, I understand it because I've been talking about it for a year and a half, and so it's clear in my brain, but it's not clear in most people's brains. And when I hear people say, oh, it's another lid, it's not another, not another lid. So we need to engage someone that can draw a picture of what this could actually look like, um, or maybe build a model. That might be an effective tool. Um, eventually, uh, I think we'd want to bring on an engineering firm to actually go deeper into the specifics. This current, uh, concept level study says a minimum of 10 feet. Well, is it 10 feet? Is it 12 feet? Is it 14 feet? We need to start getting those specifics. Is it 20 feet wide, or is it 30 feet wide, or is it somewhere in between? We don't know that yet. So at some point, we'll have to engage someone to do that. But for, for right now, the, the two predominant steps are, are that public participation plan, and coming up with a rendering or a model to better understand what we're talking about, and start ask, start being able to answer some of those tough questions, like, like, for example, if you're on a bike, how do you get through? If you're in a wheelchair, how do you get through? Um, right now, I think a rendering or a model could illustrate that much better than just, um, general conversation.
That's helpful. Thank you. Uh, Member Rissler has a question.
I was just going to comment. I think it would make sense to push this resolution back until we have the meetings with the commissions and get their feedback and all of that.
Say that again, please.
I think it would make sense to wait on this resolution until we've met and had some public engagement, um, before moving forward.
Oh, I don't agree with that. I think I'd like to keep pushing forward and then get, figure out the public engagement strategy. I mean, personally, I don't know what others think, but...
If I could remind folks, we did do a better-together page about a year and a half ago, where we put it out to the public for about six weeks, um, to get some initial input. When we were first in that idea gathering stage, bridges, underpasses, tunnels, lots of different ideas, but that was quite some time ago. That was at least a year, maybe a year, a year and a half ago. It's time for more.
Reason I said we should maybe keep moving is because you're about to issue a building permit for 7250, and now we've approved this project to get going, and I think we need to be moving with them. And then we, if it makes, if it, we get to the point where it looks like it makes some sense, let's figure out in more depth what the public thinks about it, too. Member Jackson?
And I'm more comfortable with staff moving forward with us having approved it than on their own. Uh, I think that they, they should get direction from us.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. Member Pierce?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I definitely think it makes sense for us to do this study. Um, we have heard feedback, whether accurate or not, where, and there's a sentiment that we haven't had public, um, a, a public process for this, and we're earmarking, whether it's true or not, uh, funding for something that we've not had a public process for. Um, and so I definitely think we should do it. I support this, um, resolution. The only question I had was, um, and it reads, calling for an additional study in pursuit of funding. Um, and then, within one of the wheress clauses, actually does call out the two tax increment financing districts. And so, like, how should I interpret in pursuit of funding in that context?
Sure. Um, uh, there's a number of different state and federal programs that fund projects like this. Um, we might use theoretically, uh, TIF as a matching grant, but if we can get a state or federal fund to support this rather than our local money, that would certainly be our first choice. Um, in the feasibility report, there's about, uh, there's an exhibit with maybe eight or, an eight or 10-page-long list of different state and federal programs that this could be applicable to. So we'd
Okay.
either hire staff, or either have staff or hire a consultant to start applying to those programs, and seeing which ones have most merit and, and where some of the dollars might come from. That's what I mean by pursue.
So should that be called out in here?
Yeah. So would that mean that you'd come back to us, uh, with some ideas about requesting federal funding, and we'd approve that?
Yes. In short answer, yes. We've done that in the past. We always need, need you to
Short answer.
support those applications. I think we need to define, some of the applications require a better definition of exactly, not exactly, but what the project is. It's a big difference between a bridge and underpass. So I think we, some might require us to get a little further along in the process. Mr. Nundorf already explained. But we would have to be back to get support to apply to many of these grant programs.
I guess it does say fund, just speaking about the TIF districts, it says it could be used to fund portions of it. So, I guess in that wording, you're implying that they may not cover all the costs. But I was just asking if we are going to look for other sources of funding, is there a way we would call that out, should call that out in here? Or is that not?
Well, you could change the language of the resolution provision that you raised as a concern. You could, it could say, uh, support the additional study and exploration and potential pursuit of funding, because they've got to come back to us for permission to go after the funding. Could just change the language of that last resolution paragraph to say that city staff is authorizing city staff to conduct additional study or studies, uh, and the expiration of potential pursuit of funding.
Yeah. Okay, I like that. And then let me ask one other question. So let's say we do the study, we have our public input, and we come up with a whiz-bang underpass that everybody loves. When you come back, um, to ask for funding, if we word it this way, this potential pursuit, would you also have to come back and ask to use the pooled funds in the TIF district?
We would. I mean, per our purchasing policy, when we hire a full scope consultant to design this,
Yeah.
that contract's going to be large enough where we need to come back to either the HRA and the city and get your approvals to enter into that design contract. And the same, if we decide to build it and award the construction contract and all the other contracts that go along with it, we'd be back to these bodies to get your permission.
So you'd come back with kind of a, one of your earmarked, our famous slides that says 2% is coming from this fund, 15% is TIF, we've got these grants, tenant totals, whatever the total is.
We'll, we'll definitely
Something like that.
We'll definitely come back. It would be Mr. Mr. Milner, because at that point, it, when it evolves to a real project,
Yeah.
that'll be led by our engineering department, and Chad's the pro at doing that.
Okay, yeah.
I like tables versus pie charts, but we'll bring you something.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, let me, let me try to read the language of the resolution provision here and see if, then you want to make the motion, Member Pierce. Um, be it resolved that the city council, the city of Edana, Minnesota, supports the additional study and expiration and potential pursuit of funding for the France Avenue pedestrian crossing, and authorizes city staff to conduct additional studies so that the city council can determine whether or not to proceed with this possible project.
There we go.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right. You, you All right. You so moved?
So moved, yeah.
A second.
We got a motion of the second to adopt Resolution 2024-84 as modified by the motion language. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2024-84 as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Carries? Resolution 2024 in its modified form is adopted. See, in the title, we should have fixed that, too. Do you think the more important thing is the resolution provision at the end? Okay, well, I think we've exhausted the action items and ourselves in the process. So manager's comments, Assistant Manager Lindsey's comments. We're ready for you.
I got a couple here for you tonight. The quarterly financial report and the progress portal updates are in your packet. We did update the quarterly financial report. There was minor change with the liquor one. So if you looked at it earlier, look at it again, because we did revise that. One of the things is coded to the wrong month, so we corrected that. For the second item we have here is the 2025 Board and Commission Process, Annual Interview and Selection Process. Right now, we're proposing to do the same process that you guys have done in the past. There are six vacancies right now for boards and commissions for the next year, so that is what we're looking to do, unless you guys want some sort of changes, we'll move forward with that same process.
Good. Member Rissler, you want to tell us about your adventure last week?
Certainly, and it was really good to go to Tampa, meet with people, go to conferences, just talk to people who are really into land use regulation and nerds like that. So it was great. And I got to tour the water treatment facility in Tampa, which is, this is really exciting. It's the only one in the United States that's using this Dutch technique called SIC, Suspended Ion Exchange Technology, where organics are removed. And it's a nonproprietary method, which makes it cheaper, and it's Dutch. And it was really amazing to go and to be there and to watch the whole process. And it's different than what we do, obviously, because they're getting water from the river and then, you know, you're seeing all of the debris that needs to be removed and things that they have to grapple with, like big turtles and alligators, and we don't need to do that. But it was really a very good conference, and it was the 100-year celebration of the National League of Cities, so there was kind of a lot of hoopla. I attended sessions on budget prioritization, and also there was one on using drones, and that was really kind of fun, talking about drone taxis and is your city future-ready? Have you talked about vertiports, you know, which is kind of a fancy thing. But anyway, I guess smart cities, that terminology is a little bit disappearing more, and we're talking about future-ready. So that was very intriguing to me. But it was really good, and I want to say thank you again to the taxpayers of Edina. I learned a lot, and one of the moments, somebody came up to me, we were chatting, and they said, you know, people don't understand, you get elected to these offices, and we don't know anything. We need training. You know, and I thought that was a really accurate, on-the-nose statement, so it was good. And I can download reports and stuff from the meetings, and so happy to share those if there's any topic that people would like to know more about. So thank you.
Good, thank you. Thanks for that. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last week, I was the guest of Cub Scout PAC 68. They invited me to come talk about voting, and so I have a ballot that they got to vote on their favorite big park. And the Aquatic Center beat out Centennial Lakes and Edinburgh Park. The vote was 10, 7, 3, 10 for the Aquatic Center, 7 for Edinburgh Park, and 3 for Centennial Lakes. But, so the reason I bring this is that if my fellow council members are approached by schools or Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts and would like to do this, this is something that Jennifer Benarott created for me, and it's useful to get the kids' input on which is their favorite park for future funding. So I recommended, it was a lot of fun, and my hosts were very gracious, and I really had a nice time. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, I had just one comment. So the discussion we had earlier about the residence and project, and so there was a little dynamic there that I wasn't comfortable with, and I wasn't sure if I wanted to say anything at the time, and so I just kind of chose to wait for my comments. But there was kind of this undercurrent, and it's actually on both sides. What I didn't, what kind of rubbed me the wrong way was that we were talking about safety concerns, and we were doing it with a correlation to AMI. And so I just don't know how I feel about that. And so I think one comment, and not to call anybody out, we've had comments, I'll say it that way, we've had lots of comments about affordable housing, lower income, high, lots of issues. I don't know that anybody ever says there's high crime or anything like that, but we get emails about that. But then the comment that this shouldn't be an issue was because these were 80% AMI tenants. And I, like, I just, I don't know how I feel about that. And so I just made a note to, I actually want to talk, I guess I can say that, because there was a community comment, right, related to this. So the resident that made the comment, I made a note that I want to have a conversation because I think we should, I think we should be careful how we talk about that, and there could be some correlation between that. But at the end of the day, I think we should treat everybody the same. And so when you ask the question and the development owner came up and said, well, no, this is our process. We look at, you know, your income, your rental history, and like, that's what everybody should be looking at. And so it should have, whether it's safe or we should be concerned about our kids around developments like that that are affordable, and it's NOAA affordability, right? We even dove into that a little bit. And so I definitely want to spend a little bit of time kind of understanding what that sentiment is, and then maybe thinking about a different way that we could lean in and kind of communicate what the intent is there. So that was one comment. And then just, I actually did not even know when I sent my note late the day before that I wasn't going to be here for HRA because I had a cold, and it didn't even dawn on me that Member Rissler wasn't there. Because obviously, if there had been a situation where we wouldn't have had a quorum, I'd have just worn a mask and I would have come. But I went home for Tuskegee University's homecoming, and it was the 100th, 100th celebration. So it was this really big deal, but I think I just had too much togetherness when I came back. Touch of the flu, it wasn't cold, but I definitely came back, and I, you know, haven't been sick like that in years. But it was good to be there. And it actually, my father passed away on the 13th of November, and so it was good to be back home with my sister just prior to that as well. So all of that to just say thank you for allowing me, Assistant Manager, to not come for that meeting. Because had you said, no, James, you need to be there, I'd have been there. So I definitely appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Agnew.
Yeah, I only have one. I think it was last week, Mayor and I were both at an event in town for the Chamber of Commerce. It was their annual meeting. And it was really cool because Wooden Hill received an award, which was exciting to see. And then I went, I was there last night with my husband. We were in a cribbage tournament. I didn't do well. He did better than me, but neither of us made it to the finals. But it's just, it's so great to see, one, the expansion that they have there. I think that was the first time that I'd really seen, they were doing like trivia on one side, and we, cribbage in the back, and more events on the other. And so just, I don't know, I've been enjoying Wooden Hill this week and just wanted to share that, that everyone should check out all the addition to the space if you haven't yet.
And Veep, we enjoyed each other's company at Veep.
I was going to let you speak to that.
So I've got that, Jennifer, I handed that document to you, just a covering email. I just wanted to touch base because it's relevant to what we were just talking about tonight in terms of potential funding sources for a variety of, for a variety of things, and Director Milner knows all about this. But I was part of a, part of a, I wouldn't call it a webinar, but it's a, the local infrastructure hub is something done by Bloomberg Philanthropies. And so they had me moderate a panel of mayors that talked about projects that they had secured funding for under the IIJA, under Bill, also the bilateral bipartisan infrastructure law. And so we got to kind of say goodbye to Secretary Buttigieg. He's, you know, he'll, it won't be too long in January where he'll be finished up. And then Craig Greenberg, it was Mayor Norman Illinois, Craig Greenberg from Louisville, and then Aquanetta Warren from Fontana, California were the panel. But the point I wanted to make from all of this was that Secretary Pete said, keep your foot on the gas pedal with all of this activity, and Bloomberg has set up through the local infrastructure hub. And Chad, this might be for you, you want to get some folks looking at this. They've got a funding pathfinder that they've set up on the website. And so you can start to think about things like, let's say, the crossing on France Avenue or additional funding for their bridge projects we got coming up, or, you know, other things that you might think of that are important and potentially fundable through the bilateral infrastructure law. So that's it for that. We also had a call today with Charlie Zilli from the Met Council with regard to Southwest LRT. And just to report on a few key data points, there's now been $3.1 billion of development along the line. There are 9,300 built multifamily units in those various communities along the line, and 7,200 in planning with another three-quarters of a billion dollars in multifamily housing in process from Eden Prairie through Minnetoka, Hopkins, and now into Minneapolis. So it's a $2.6 billion investment. It's now 85% complete, and then the start date is still estimated to be 2027. So I thought folks would want to know about that as well. And then I was at a housing meeting a couple days ago over at the League. We've been working with some of the legislators on these issues around housing affordability and also housing production. And the builders, Housing First, indicated that there's now national data that show. What do you think the average age is for the first-time homebuyer now?
Thirty-five.
Pretty close, 38. 38 for the first-time homebuyer, average age now. That's high, I think.
Very high.
I think a lot of people were buying houses in their late 20s.
All bought a house.
At 22, you know? Yeah, so it's becoming apparent that more and more people are going to be in apartments because it takes longer and longer to build the equity to be able to buy a house. So those are kind of the, some of the things that popped up this week for me. I thought you might benefit from or enjoy hearing about. And that's it, I think. Anybody feel like making a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Who made that motion to adjourn? Member Rissler?
I did, I did. As fast as I could.
Second, Member Rissler. All right, here we go. We got a motion of the second to adjourn the meeting of the City Council. It's 19th day of November 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Stand adjourned.